Devices, those can also be found at that table right there. And also the full agenda is available on that table as well. At this time, I would like to call Pastor Rick Fountain from the First Baptist Church of Taveries, do the invitation. Orderly as we possibly can, but I ask that everybody be respectful of each individual. And we're going to go ahead and move on to item number three, the approval of the agenda.
I just wanted to add, we have a certain number of seats that we can accommodate in order to meet life safety codes. We're at that capacity now. So we've asked those that have joined us, that are out in the hallway, if you want to speak on an item that's before the council, please see our fire chief, raise your hand. He has a speaker's form, and you will be asked to come in at the time that you want to speak. So everyone's going to have an opportunity to speak, even if you're in the hallway, we will get you in here to speak. And generally, the rule is if you leave these chambers, we're going to let somebody come in instead of your seat, so everybody gets a chance to come in as well. There are no changes to the agenda. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to move on to...
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving the agenda? Opposed? All right, motion carries, five zero. We're going to move on to item number four, proclamations and presentations. That'll be tab two, and we have, that will be proclamation for Vice Mayor Fister. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Lori Fister was elected as council member to the Taveries City Council on November 20th, 2006, and whereas Lori Fister served as mayor for the years 2016 to 2018, and whereas Lori Fister, in her capacity as mayor, did serve the city and citizens of Taveries by providing stewardship and leadership by running efficient and effective city council meetings, marking recommendations on community board appointments, and representing the city council at numerous events in the city throughout Lake County, the region, and the state. And whereas Lori Fister has served many successful years as the council liaison, the Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Mayors, and the Sister Cities International, and whereas Lori Fister has been an enthusiastic champion of arts and culture in Taveries, whereas Lori Fister has been dedicated, passionate, and truly committed to serving the citizens of Taveries in that leadership role of mayor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Troy W. Singer, on behalf of the entire city council, city staff, and citizens of Taveries, do hereby bestow special thanks, recognition, and appreciation to Lori Fister for her outstanding contribution to the city of Taveries, America's seaplane city. Thank you for that, very well deserved, Lori. We have a signed proclamation frame that we give to you, and you can display it as you wish.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. All right, now we're going to move on to item number five, swearing in by city attorney and disclosure of ex parte communications. Bob Williams.
It always concerns me when I look out at the audience and see a lot of suits. But we did have some quasi-pudicial matters and some counsel here today. The quasi-pudicial matters that you have on the agenda tonight are tab eight, which is the Dora Lake Estates rezoning, tab ten, which is the Lane Park Commons rezoning. There are also a couple of preliminary questions on the agenda. We may have speakers on those, but those are not considered quasi-pudicial as far as they're ministerial only. So if you're here today and you want to speak on either of the rezoning ordinances, Dora Lake Estates or Lane Park Commons, our rules require that you stand at this time and be sworn in. Our testimony is required to be under oath. Okay? Anybody else? I'll raise your right hands, please, your solemn swear of firm testimony, give this cause with truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Okay? If there's anybody else who decides you want to speak, but you haven't been sworn in, kindly remind us when we come up and we'll swear you at that time. You also have to give your name and address to the clerk, who's over there. This is also the time of the meeting when we disclose ex parte communications that any of the council members may have had with regard to either of the rezonings. Those are communications that you may have had written or oral telephone, site visits, anything else like that that you get outside of the council room pertaining to these particular reasons. If you've had any such contacts, our rules require that you disclose them at this time. Can we start? Suck you, how are you?
I've had contact for and against on tab eight, and email, I'm sorry, I had an email on tab eight for, and then verbal communications against on tab eight, and on tab ten, verbal and email for the project.
Amanda?
For tab eight, I've had contact with different community members about their being involved in projects, and for tab ten, I've met with developers and have had contact with citizens about their feelings.
Concerning tab eight, I've previously disclosed that I had communications with the community concerning tab eight, that's previously been disclosed on two pages.
And I just talked to individuals, residents about that task.
And I've had communication on both eight and ten, with for and against, opposedes.
I saw Tara Tedra standing out there as counsel for somebody, perhaps. Are you in one of the, involved in one of the rezonings, Tara?
Tab ten.
Did you have questions of any of the council members regarding your disclosures? Does anybody on tab eight, as the Dora Lake Estates, want to question any of the council members about any of the disclosures that they made regarding ex parte communications? Okay, I've seen that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item number six, the reading of all ordinance, resolutions, and the record. Please go back.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three resolutions and four ordinances. Resolution 2018-26, a resolution of the city of Taveries, Florida, amending the 2019 fiscal year adopted budget for the city of Taveries, representing the First Amendment to the adopted budget and providing for repealer of separability and effective date. Resolution 2018-27, a resolution by the city council of the city of Taveries, Florida, designating the mayor, vice mayor, city administrator, and acquaintance director as authorized signers for all city checks for city discounts that require two signatures for all city checks. Resolution 2018-28, a resolution of the city of Taveries, Florida, relating to the state revolving loan program, loan program, authorizing SRF fund agreement WW350961 for Lake Francis Water Distribution and Picking Improvement Project Construction Activities, sets the loan amount, providing for conflict separability and effective date. Ordinance 2018-13, ordinance of the city of Taveries rezoning apartment link, 9.89 acres of property generally located south of Mansfield Road, east of County Drive, from Plan Development PD to residential multifamily RMA three, subject to the rules regulations and obligations ordained by the city of Taveries Council, providing for separability, providing for effective date. Ordinance 2018-24, ordinance of the city of Taveries, amending chapter 15, retirement article five, firefighter suspension amendment, trust fund for the code of ordinances of the city of Taveries, amending section 15-108, disability, amending section 15-117, miscellaneous provisions, amending section 15-128, deferred retirement option plan, amending section 15-129, unemployment after retirement, providing for classification, providing for separability and provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date. Ordinance 2018-22, an ordinance of the city of Taveries, Florida, rezoning apartment link, 13.19 acres of property located on the northwest corner of State Route 19 and Lane Park Road, from Plan Development PD to residential single family, RSF two, subject to the rules regulations and obligations ordained by the city of Taveries Council, providing for an effective date. And ordinance 2018-23, an ordinance of the city of Taveries, Florida, amending the Taveries comprehensive plan of future land use, SNAP 2020, providing for change of future land use designation on approximately 13.19 acres of land located on the northwest corner of State Route 19 and Lane Park Road, from commercial COM to low-density LW, providing for separability and conflicts, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number seven, consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any item that we have under Seeing no one in the audience, council? Mayor, let it pull tab four. Other than that, move to approve.
I'll step in.
All right, we have tab four being pulled, and we're going to vote on the consent with tab four being pulled. I'll list the papers. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry none? All right, motion passes, five zero. We're going to go ahead and pull tab number four, which is amlets up to various subdivision, northern lot line adjustment, need development?
Go ahead and let the council member ask the question, and then he'll go.
The only question I have is saying that we're moving the lot line north. How far, I couldn't read how far we're moving north in the lot line, or what's going on with that section?
It amounts, the legal description that is on the quitclaim deed amounts to 3,000 square feet. It's a minimal movement to the north. You can kind of tell from this survey that it's really a minor adjustment. How many feet I would have to...
So the double lines is what it was moving, then, correct?
Yes.
That's what I wasn't sure about.
Curvy up in the top right corner of that survey, you'll see where the red writing is, there's a discrepancy, this happens in surveys sometimes, because back when they did the original surveys, the floor, these chains, and there were trees, and palm trees, and alligators in the way, and it wasn't as accurate as lasers today, so depending where you start measuring from, it's not uncommon to find gaps, very small gaps. This gap that is shown here is at, right above, about where the word draft is, it's 4.83 feet, and then tapers to zero. And this is a timing issue, this is to clear up the problem, to keep somebody from having to do a quiet title suit, we do it all the time. The city's given a quitclaim deed to this, I'm not even sure that we own it, but we're going to curate, we propose to curate a quitclaim deed.
Thank you.
Show up in a title examination.
Thank you. Move to approve, tab four?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry none? Motion passes, five zero. We're going to move on to item number eight, ordinance, resolutions, public hearing. Nothing under first reading. We're going to move on to, go ahead and move on to second reading. Tab eight, ordinance 2018-13, Dora Lake Estates, rezoning of 9.89 acres, south of Mansfield Road, east of County Drive. The mic will show it.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property consists of 9.89 acres located south of Mansfield Road and east of County Drive. The property is currently owned by American Adult Care LLC. The property is vacant, except for road and utility infrastructure that was installed as part of the Dora Lake Estates subdivision. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from assisted living plan development to residential multifamily RMA three for the purpose of constructing apartment buildings with approximately 156 units. The property is surrounded by a mixture of multifamily and single-family property. The existing infrastructure will be modified or abandoned as part of the redevelopment of the property. The recorded plat for Dora Lake Estates will have to be vacated prior to any development. Development of the property will be in accordance with the city's land development regulations, and prior to issuance of any building permits from a project to site plan, demonstrating compliance with all regulations will be required. A traffic study was submitted to the city of Taveries indicating that surrounding roadways will operate at adequate level of service at buildout of the development. The city's engineering consultant, Griffey Engineering...
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
The city's engineering consultant, Griffey Engineering, reviewed the traffic study and had no objection to the study's methodology. Property owner is willing to enter into a developer's agreement with the city of Taveries to ensure that any damage to existing roadways that results from construction activity will be repaired at the property owner's expense. The development has secured school capacity reservation for 44 students. The underlying future land use of high density approved by ordinance 2012-36 on January 16th, 2013, does not change and is compatible with the requested RMA three zoning district. And the current flu designation allows for 25 units per acre. At their October 18th meeting, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of ordinance 2018-13. Staff recommends that city council moves to approve 2018-13, rezoning 9.89 acres of property from Plan Development to residential multifamily RMA three.
Thank you. And is the applicant present? If we could have you step forward and give us a synopsis on exactly what you are asking for, or presenting.
Carlos Varios, 605 Laney Avenue.
Can everybody hear him? No, I can't hear you. Write it.
Carlos Varios, 605 Laney Avenue, Varios, San Diego, San Antonio. To see a brief history on this property, this property was rezoned five years ago to a PUB, our client was trying to do an assisted living facility. The reason why we passed...
Can you bring it a little closer up, Charlie?
The reason why we passed, our client tried to develop property as an assisted living facility, however, it wasn't feasible at the time, so they looked at different options. They tried to do single-family residential, they approached other developers in the area with the experience. The older developers turned the property down, also the ACLA, again, wasn't feasible, so they started looking at other options. They studied ad-water apartments near the, or at capacity right now. So based on that, they decided that the best way to develop property at this time is a multifamily, because of the need and the man in the area. The property, as you can see, we're trying to do 156 units. Originally, it was rezoned to a PUB that would allow 250 beds, not 250 units. However, it was an assisted congregant living facility, meaning that some of the units would be for single living, couples that would leave without assistance, couples that would have cars, kitchens, and it would be self-sufficient. We're trying, now what we're trying to do today is 156 units, which is about a 40% reduction of the beds. Nonetheless, you can't compare apples to apples, so I'm not trying to say that we're reducing proposed development by 40%, but we're definitely decreasing the amount of units that we're trying to do. We understand there are several concerns, one of which is the roads, also where it's going to be the added community and the way the property will look. At this time, we're trying to, the apartments that you can see up here on the screen, this is not going to be affordable housing for the reason that it's not feasible to develop it as affordable housing, so the price range for the rents is going to be probably between the $15 to $1700 a month. The roads are supposed to be private roads, it's going to be a gated community, and the property management company will maintain the roads. The utilities will be public utilities, and developer acknowledges that it will have to do a descriptive easement over the utilities, so the city can access utilities anytime they may need. Regarding the buffering of the property, developer has agreed to build a wall between the existing residential properties and proposed buildings. These buildings are going to be three-story high at the maximum, and each pod is going to have between four to six units. Most of these apartments are going to be facing the lake, this is going to be a little bit harder, I want to give you reassurance, this is not going to be affordable housing. Most of them are going to have lake view, which is one of the reasons to build that we're going to be able to pay the rents that we're going to answer. And we're also going to have a recreational area with a wet heat tension pond in the middle of the property, so people that don't have a great view of the lake are going to be able to enjoy the recreational area and the water fountain in the middle. Regarding stormwater, this side is, most side is going to go mostly underground, with the exception of the water that we're going to be able to retain within the wet and tension area. The roads are a big concern, we understand that, and developer has agreed to enter into developer's agreement stating that they will face any road that construction be, was damaged during construction. Of course, these roads would have to be identified by the city during the site plan review process and entering to an agreement. Regarding the traffic capacity, a traffic study like heard before has been done that shows that the roads have enough capacity to accept traffic that will generate, and we have our traffic on so long here today, a few other questions. Captain said, I can do it open to the neighbors, and they're going to ask some questions.
Okay. Yeah, this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment, so I've got three speakers that we have that have turned in a request to speak. If we have the others, if you can just bring them up to Mr. Clark right over here, and he'll get those over here. But I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. So I'm going to go ahead and call up the first person. I have Dickie Jean Sperry. Yes?
If you don't mind, I'm just going to add a little bit to what Carlos says.
So you're part of the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
My name is John Howland, 8518, Tulip Court. So as Carlos mentioned, this is more or less sort of the, our fourth light at the apple to try and determine the best use for the property. As you mentioned a while ago, a long time ago now, we had the property rezoned to assisted living, we actively pursued a partner for that, and they looked at it in earnest, and to no avail, we're not able to get that project going as an assisted living facility. As a single family, you know, companies like DR Horton, they're not interested in the property. We spoke with another potential partner regarding the flying in community, that didn't pan out because of not enough room and, you know, size of the roads and so forth. So this is our, sort of what we feel is our last reasonable attempt to make the, create the highest and best use of the property as a single family. And hopefully, as the picture suggests here, you know, we plan to be good stewards for the location. It's a pristine location, and we plan to develop a property that is, as the picture suggests, is not low-income housing. The ad-water apartments that Carlos had mentioned, they opened last December, and within nine months, they're at full capacity, so it's a waiting list there. So there's clearly a need for it, and the rents that Carlos had mentioned, the ad-water, they charge up to $1,550 for a three-bedroom unit. So we're suggesting a price range from $1,500 to $1,700, but for this location, we certainly think that that's reasonable, and we clearly feel that there is a need in the community. You know, currently, the property is vacant, it doesn't invite necessarily good activities sitting there, continuing to be vacant. We think that developing this project, and again, not a low-income housing, a higher quality development, is going to sort of ride, raise the tide, if you will, for that area. It'll be a gated entrance, as Carlos mentioned, we will maintain the property in the ground, so it'll continue to maintain that look and feel, sort of a higher end, and that's something certainly we will need to do to be able to get the folks that we want there and the rents that we're hopefully looking to get. And, you know, with that, we're interested, we're just eager to get something going there, and ultimately, that'll increase the tax basis for the city, and, you know, with that, I just wanted to add a couple comments if we could.
You might have some more questions for you, but I'm going to go ahead, and as I said, open up for public comments, so we have Ms. Dickie Jean Sperry. So if you can keep your comments to three minutes or less, be great.
Hello. Hi, Dickie Jean Sperry, 1025 Mansfield Road, Taveries, two houses down from where this development is planned. I'm looking at it in some ways from a school standpoint, as retired teacher. You're saying 156 units and only 44 children? I don't get that, and our schools are already so overcrowded, it's unbelievable. Also, that road is not legal for school buses to come down. The road is supposed to be, I think it's a minimum of 18 feet for a school bus to travel on the road. That road, Mansfield Road, most of it is nowhere near 18 feet. I think some of the other people are going to speak to other concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Edwin Drew.
Afternoon. My name's Evan Drew, 955 Mansfield Road. I'm down the street with this development. My wife usually speaks on this behalf, she is not here due to engagement, emergency came up. She's done all the studies, she's more apt of it, and she was prepared, and the last meeting y'all had, I asked that this be postponed next meeting, or next year, whatever's coming up, because she's on top of everything, she's got all the studies, and I got them, I don't have last minute to go over every one of them, because there is a lot of inadequacy of the developer's statements on this property. So I propose this be put off to next, the next council meeting, because she was here prepared for the last one, but something should come up, and she was unable to make it to this one, and I am not prepared to do this, so many things.
Thank you very much.
I'm Alan Zell. I live at ten seventy-five Mansfield Road. My back door is going to be facing this thing. Not too happy about that. I'm going to try to keep to three minutes, but I've got several concerns. The road, like everybody else. Number two, is the council taking into consideration police and fire department? We're going to need more people. We already need them now. That's a major concern of mine. Also, looking at this drawing, this is the first time I've got a chance to look at it, we have nothing in that area that is three stories tall. So this does not fit in with our local area. The roads I have measured in front of my house, they're fourteen feet, not quite eighteen. It's crowded, there's times we can't even get out of our house because of the traffic. I have never seen any sign of any type of traffic monitoring to run up and get this. The roads will be great, they'll handle it. Also, when it was assigned, and I voted for the assisted living, that was a well-thought-out plan, I wish it would have gone through, the state refused it because of the roads. Okay, that's one fact. But when you put this, and assisted living, very few of them will be driving. I work, I do home repairs and repair stuff, ninety percent of your assisted-living people do not drive, they have buses that will take them here and there. I just hope that you guys, there's so much development in that area that it's going to be so overwhelmed, Nineteen is going to be, need to be six-lane, because there's so much development down Dead River, Lightning Park, us, the development right in front of the mobiles home park, by their wish, that pocket community, that's a good idea, it's the way they're going to do it. It's not bad. This here, three stories, that many people, I don't care if you charge a million dollars, you can get millionaires in there, it's too much traffic. I please beg you guys to think, I'm being as nice as I can, I'm saying what I really want, because if I told you what I thought of this project, it's too many people for that area. Common sense, if anybody in the world's got any common sense anymore. I'm definitely not politically correct, because to do this and approve this, this is looking on us that live in the area as, we don't give a darn about you. Thank God I didn't say what I wanted to say. All right? I'm going to quit there, but please think of it. Three stories, that many people? Honestly, consider and get a hold of assisted living facilities, see how many of those people do drive their own cars. You'll find very few.
Thank you, Ms. Zell. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? All right, see, no more public comment, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. I will ask the applicant if there was any questions that was brought up during the public comment, if you would like to address those.
Counsel, can I ask you a question that was brought up, and the only thing that I need to clarify is about the school capacity. That's not a number that we came up with, it's submitted to the city or county in a daily study, and they really want to determine that the post-development generates approximately forty-four students. And they also determined that there is no capacity for the students that the development will generate. Regarding the roads, again, I acknowledge that there are concerns. A traffic study has been done, has been performed by professionals in the area, the traffic consultant. Your traffic consultant has reviewed it and understands the methodology and agrees with it, and it shows that there is capacity to accept the trips that we're going to generate. I think the developer would like to say a few words in closing.
So Carlos is accurate in terms of the school capacity, that is, we applied to the county, and we told it of the number of units that we were looking to develop, they came back with the school capacity report, so we just have to go off what they, it's their business, they told us what that number is. Regarding the assisted living not being approved due to the nature of roads, I just respectfully say that that's not an accurate statement. It was turned, we were not able to get funding as part of the HUD program that we were looking to get it financed through, because there was too much available capacity in the local area. Osprey Lodge, that was, when they looked at the amount of beds that were currently available, they said that they would not, they would not finance it primarily due to that reason, but it had nothing to do with the roads. We never even got that far. And so regarding the perimeter of the property, I'm just trying to address all the issues. The perimeter, so we planned to have that landscape up, right, I know that we touched on that, to sort of diffuse what people will see sort of in both directions, we're cognizant of that and want to limit that as much as possible. Regarding the eighteen-foot, I don't know what the, if there is a city rule regarding that, but I suspect that kids live in that area, so if eighteen-foot is a county guideline for a road for a school bus to be able to traverse, then I would think that if it's fourteen feet, as somebody suggested, that that's just an issue in and of itself, regardless if we do a project there or not, the road is insufficient in its current width, and so that, I can't speak to that exactly, but I think that's pretty much addressed.
All right, thank you. And now I'm going to go ahead and open it up for counsel's discussion. So counsel, do you have any questions?
I do. Can I get Mr. Zell back up there? Mr. Zell, would you mind coming back up to the podium, sir?
No problem.
Mr. Zell, I think you and I have spoken about this before, sir, in days gone by. What I don't want to do, I don't want to invite you to attack me and yell at me.
I'm not, I'm going to thank you.
I like to have a civil discussion.
Yeah.
I'm also not inviting the audience to yell and scream and catcall at me or anyone else, that's not my purpose. You're an eloquent guy, I want to have a conversation with you, so we can find, hopefully, some common ground. If we have a traffic study that is performed by people trained and educated and having experience in that area, if they use scientific principles and scientific methods, and they do a study, and then we have got it reviewed by some engineer that is part of the city of Tavries, if I have that as evidence that the road conditions are adequate for this project, and I have you, sir, and I need you to allow, and clear, your neighbors have said the same thing, if you guys are telling me that the roads are not adequate, but we have this scientific, trained expert telling us that it is adequate, how do I resolve that, sir?
That's a good question. I saw no evidence of any traffic study. That I have to say, I saw none, all right? If a school bus or another truck is coming down Mansfield by my house, or ninety percent of anything south of the railroad track, I get off on the side and he gets off on the side. If a car, if, now, it's a little small car, which some of the people do have, you know, we both can stay on the road, it's close, but to get a school bus, and there are a lot of people, I hollered at a guy today flying by there, and there was about three or four of them, and that's another matter of it. I mean, you know, I'm sorry, I haven't seen any proof of a road study for traffic. We have one way in and out to go southbound on Nineteen, I didn't even bring that up this time, all right? And that's at the light at Dead River and Nineteen, you've got people from two mobile home parks that work their way through there sometimes. You, you know, everybody that lives back in that way, that's the way they go, by Dunkin' Donuts to get out southbound on Nineteen. There are several ways to go north there. Now, and I know that's something to do with the study, because it's a state highway, but what I'm saying is the city has taken, if it was a scientific study on the traffic and they used a computer, I saw no, you know how they used to put the things across the road, they would count the traffic going backwards, there was none of that, I never saw, and everybody I've talked to has never seen it. If they'd done it on a computer, trust me, I do not trust computers, I hate them, and I use one for my business to keep records, still don't like them, so I don't know what to tell you. And to be honest, if the person with the city went over that study and didn't personally go out there and see what it's like, not in the middle of the day, during Saturdays, Sundays, during the rush hours, then I would say, you know, show me, you know, I haven't even seen this traffic study, I don't know where they got it from, and ninety percent of the people that live in that area don't have.
Is that any of your questions?
That's a great answer, Mr. Zell. Couldn't I provide him with the traffic study? I have a copy of it, can I get it to him?
And how did they do it? That's computerized?
Oh, it's on the internet? You're not a computer guy? Me either, man, I like touching stuff. I have the traffic study, I'm going, I'm not going to get up and stand up in the middle and all that, but I'm going to make sure somehow I'm going to get it to you as quickly as I can, okay, when we're done talking right now.
All right, yeah.
You would have to agree with me, would you not, sir? If there's a garbage truck on the road and you have to pull off to the side of the road to let the garbage truck pass, is that not, that condition exists today without this project, is that true?
Yes, but then when you add the traffic.
In order to go southbound on Nineteen, that condition exists today, sir, without this project, correct?
Right. But all you're going to do is compound the problem by putting that many more houses, and they say that because we have multifamily dwellers in that area, we don't have high rises in that area. Thank you.
I understand your concerns, Mr. Zell.
I mean, it's, it's a nice area. It's, like I said, I can see that whole place out my back door.
Yes, sir.
I remember when it was Orange Rose, the pine forest mountain, there's very little activity in that area. What you do is get kids riding the bikes and stuff back in that area, so it's not a terrible area.
I understand your concerns, sir. Thank you for any further questions.
Thank you.
And the traffic study.
Will you get this done to you?
No, sir, I don't have it already.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Counsel, do we have any other questions?
Counsel, questions?
Of course.
Do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions, actually, I got some statements. Mike, can you turn that, turn off of that free picture and put it on the roads? All right, so, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm a Lake County guy, and I've been here my entire life, and I just got to, is the engineer, the new traffic study here?
Yes.
Are you here? Okay, good, so I've got some questions. Looking over the traffic study, it seems to me like that I am reading is thirteen-hundred-and-twenty trips a day, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So would you consider thirteen-hundred-and-twenty trips, that would be thirteen-hundred-and-twenty cars?
Correct.
Right? Okay.
That's on a daily basis.
Right, so a trip is a car.
Yes, and then half of that is entering, half is exit.
Right, I'm just trying to get everybody else on the same page. So we've got thirteen-hundred-and-twenty cars.
Correct.
On Mansfield Road. Correct?
Not all of it on Mansfield Road.
All right, so where would a car go out of your development that wouldn't be on Mansfield Road? There's a picture up there, and there's only one way in and one way out, right?
Right.
Unless they have an awful car.
Mansfield Road from the project entrance out to Wells, and then from Wells, traffic is.
So, can you get the microphone closer up, I'm hard of hearing.
Yes.
I can't hear very well, my ears are ringing, so my battery's going dead, it's crazy up here.
No problem. The, on Mansfield Road, from the entrance out to Wells, yes, all the traffic is on Mansfield, but at that point, at Wells Avenue intersection, the traffic dissipates.
So your entrance isn't going to be where the entrance is today, on that piece of property?
Yes, it is on Mansfield.
It is, so is that entrance Mansfield Road?
Yes, correct.
Is there another road that a car can get on from your property other than Mansfield Road?
No.
So it's thirteen-hundred-and-twenty cars per day on Mansfield Road?
Correct, out to Wells Avenue.
That took a long time to get to that point. So they could turn either left or right.
Correct.
On Mansfield Road, actually, they need to go straight or turn left on Mansfield Road.
That's right.
If they turn left on Mansfield Road, they got to be under around County Line Drive and get out of Nineteen and turn south.
Correct.
Looking at your traffic study, and I could have missed it, because, you know, I don't know, I'm from Lake County, but I didn't see any impact on Mansfield Road. There's a statement here that says the development is not anticipated to adversely affect, or adversely impact the surrounding transportation network. So I looked at the surrounding transportation network, and it said Wells Avenue, and it said Nineteen, but it didn't specifically mention Mansfield Road unless I missed it somewhere. Did your traffic study specifically mention Mansfield Road?
Only in the peak hour conditions, because the traffic analysis focuses on the morning peak and the afternoon peak, and that's done by analyzing the intersection of Mansfield and Wells Avenue.
Right, the afternoon peak was like eighty-four, and the morning peak was sixty-three or something like that? An hour?
Correct.
That's an hour peak.
That's correct.
So eighty-nine cars in an hour, going out and like thirty-four coming in, so you've got a hundred and ten cars in an hour.
No, it's, the afternoon is ninety-nine total B M, sixty-two entering, thirty-seven exiting. That's a B M peak.
All right.
And then the morning is eighty-three, so it's nineteen entering, sixty-four exiting. It's, so.
Right, an hour.
No.
An hour peak.
That's a V hour, correct.
Ninety cars in an hour on Mansfield Road, that's not going to adversely affect the transportation?
Yes.
Okay.
Because.
All right, I live on a small road, too. I live on a very small road, and I don't think I have any car going by my house a day.
It's a defined capacity for every road, so every road has an X amount of capacity that a road can handle for, like a two, two-lane road, for example, can handle up to twelve-thousand cars a day, in some cases, depends on the classification of the road. I'm just giving examples, I'm not talking about Mansfield. In general, there are different classifications, there are local roads, county roads, state roads, different types of roads have different capacity limits.
Right, right.
So as long as the number of cars on that road is below that capacity, that's where we say the road is operating.
Right, so the road can handle.
Up to that number.
Thirteen-hundred-and-twenty extra cars.
That's correct.
How many cars are on it now? Before your development? Let me ask you a question, then. The rating of the road, do you know?
Not something I have right here in touch with.
I don't even get it. Do you know about where it is? Midway?
Midway.
Midway, okay.
So today there is. About two thousand, twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred cars currently today on that road?
Correct.
And we're going to add another thirteen-hundred-and-twenty. So just, just for counsel's awareness, I don't know, that's four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand cars a year, extra on that road. And it doesn't adversely. And it doesn't adversely affect?
No, that's not...
I don't know. I mean, I did the quick math. I come in from Lake County, so I'm pretty smart. So, it's thirteen hundred and twenty trips.
Thirteen hundred plus the two thousand that's on there today, but the capacity of that road is about nine thousand.
I'm just talking about your development because the road's already got the capacity on there from people who've been there for fifty years. So, thirteen hundred and twenty trips, and we agreed, is a car, right?
Correct.
Every day.
Yes.
Whereas on there, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. So, that's about four hundred and eighty-five thousand extra cars a year.
I mean, if you...
Thirteen hundred and twenty times three hundred and sixty-five, that's the only way I can do it. I don't know. It's a very high score.
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't know how...
It's not so capacity. I mean, I go back to what I was saying, that there's capacity, that's what can handle a...
I'm just understanding your traffic study. I don't want to agree with it.
All right.
I don't want to agree. I'm not an engineer. I don't want to agree that...
It's a very... It's a very strange one.
I'm done. Thank you.
Counselor number five, do you have any questions? Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
May I ask you one?
A mile out?
Yes.
Did you actually go out there? One of the things we had heard earlier, did you actually go and observe the roads?
Yes, our technicians went on, our engineers.
Okay. When you guys talk about traffic capacity and all these things like Mr. Smith was talking to you about, you're not saying you may not have to sit in traffic for a second. Like, traffic capacity, if I have to be behind a car as I'm exiting my neighborhood, that would not affect traffic capacity. Is that true? Is that... The way you guys look at it is if I have to sit behind two cars at a red light, that does not mean that the road's in action.
That's correct. There is a level service analysis for every road and intersection goes from A to F. A, of course, being the best, F being failing. So, if the road or intersection is operating at a level service C or even D, that's acceptable to the county, to the city, standard. But for a person that's sitting at the traffic light who waits one cycle or two cycles, to them, to the average person, that's not acceptable. Right, but as far as the guidelines in traffic, so the guidelines, it is an acceptable level service. That's what we asked you.
You have any questions, sir?
You are. Thank you very much. I have a question now. Mike, now, if this project does not go through, what happens with the alternative property? It pretty much just stays a vacant subdivision?
It stays a vacant subdivision that is currently plotted for single-family residential homes. These... The future land use is not compatible with single-family. So, if it reverts back to that type of development, we would come back with a future land use change for low-density residential.
I appreciate everybody's comments, and I, too, have concerns about the traffic as well and the road condition. But with nothing being done out there, nothing's going to get done. And my fear is that if this project doesn't go through, you're going to have a defunct development sitting in your backyard for a long time to come. So, that's my fear, sir. So, I'm going to go ahead and ask the counsel, how you want to move on this?
I make a motion we not approve the project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for not approving the project. All those in favor of not approving the project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed of not approving the project? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries to not approve the project by vote of three to two. We're move on to tab number nine, ordinance twenty-two. All right, we're going to move on to ordinance twenty-eight, section twenty-four, firefighter pension plan amendment. Ms. Hoaden?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, thank you. The item before you is to request counsel approval for ordinance two thousand eighteen twenty-four, which amends the firefighter pension plan to include language for updated IRC code and litigated case law. Some summary of the changes to the firefighter pension plan include section fifteen one oh eight, to more clearly define disability for resigned or terminated employees, section fifteen one seventeen, under miscellaneous provisions, to amend the setting to allow for missing benefit recipients, and section fifteen one twenty-eight, deferred retirement option to prevent the achievement for remaining subsections. Section fifteen one twenty-nine, re-employment after retirement. A detailed explanation of each change was provided in a letter from the firefighter pension plan attorney Scott R. Christensen of Christensen, Dager, PA. The plan actuary Douglas Elizabeth Foster and Foster has reviewed and appined that the changes have no impact on the assumption used in determining the requirements for the plan. He is also applying that no formal actuarial impact statement is needed or required. And the options before you are moved to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen twenty-four, amending the firefighter pension plan to include language for the IRC code and litigated case law, or not to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoaden. Is anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Counsel, do you have any questions? Questions, how would I move on this?
I'd need to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes by zero. Moving on to tab number ten, we have ordinance two zero eighteen dash twenty-two, Lane Park Commons, rezoning of thirteen point one nine acres on the northwest corner of State Road nineteen and Lane Park Road. Mike, it's Gerald.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject parcel is thirteen point one nine acres of vacant property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of State Road nineteen and Lane Park Road. The property is owned by Lane Park Commons LLC and is currently zoned as a commercial planned development per ordinance two thousand seven dash zero one. The owner is proposing to rezone the property to residential single-family, RSF two, for the purpose of constructing single-family homes on sixty-foot wide lots. City utilities are located on State Road nineteen and Lane Park Road, and the homes will be connected to city water and sewer. The traffic study submitted to the staff indicates no adverse impacts to surrounding roadways. School capacity has been reserved for nineteen students. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant must secure permits from outside agencies and receive final construction and plating approval from the city before homes can be built. Property is surrounded by a mixture of single-family and agricultural property, and it's staff's opinion that a single-family residential development is an appropriate use for this property. The city is concurrently processing a proposed change to the future land use designation of the property from commercial to low-density to be compatible with the requested residential zoning district. And that proposed future land use designation will allow for five point six units of residential dwellings. At their November fifteenth meeting, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to approve ordinance eighteen dash twenty-two, and staff recommends that city council moves to approve ordinance eighteen dash twenty-two, rezoning thirteen point one nine acres of property from planned development to residential single-family, RSF two.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? State your name correctly.
Good evening. My name is Tara, Ted Row, two one five North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida. Here on behalf of the applicant. I've got a PowerPoint, Mike, if you don't mind pulling that up. And sorry, I don't have a clipper, Mike, so I'm going to have to ask you to click through some of these slides. So, tonight before you for consideration, and I won't do a full presentation for the future land use change portion of this, I'll try to cover everything in just one quick presentation. A lot of people here, so I'll try to get you out early. An overview of the site shows you that it's thirteen point nineteen acres of vacant land at the northwest intersection of State Road nineteen and Lane Park Road, currently zoned as a commercial PD property. That PD is back from two thousand and seven, and it provided for a hundred and forty thousand square feet of commercial uses on that site. That PD ordinance also had a condition that within twenty-four months of the ordinance being enacted, a site plan was to be submitted and approved, and that obviously never happened. So, we have to come back in for a rezoning of some sort to deal with any development that's going to happen on this property. So, we're requesting a rezoning to residential single-family, so that's RSF two. We have a traffic study that indicated that there were no adverse impacts. In a comparison to what would be approved or allowed by right under commercial, a significant decrease in traffic, which we'll have our traffic engineer talk about. In addition, we have confirmation that school capacity is reserved for nineteen students. By way of background, there was a previous request for a residential PD on this property that came before you all, and that one was requesting fifty-foot wide lots, so smaller lots than what you're permitted by right under RSF two. Based on the feedback we received from that vote, we realized that the fifty-foot wide lots were not the preference of the council, and so we came back for just a straight rezoning. Everything is going to be per code under RSF two. In addition, we revised our concept plan following feedback from the commission, and our lots are sixty feet wide. We reduced our lot count from fifty-three lots to forty-six lots, which is what's permitted under RSF two and what would be permitted for the density under the change to low-density residential under the comp plan. Back in November, we had our PNC hearing, where you heard staff say we have a unanimous recommendation for approval. We had our first reading back in early December here, and we will still need to submit site plans. So, some of the finer details, which I'm sure residents always want to hear about, and we're happy to chat offline of, if anybody who might have questions tonight, too, this is just the entitlement phase for the zoning and for the future land use change. So, when we come in to talk about the required setbacks under your code for RSF two, and what is land staining going to look like, and will there be a wall? What are the entry features to the subdivision? All of that gets worked out after tonight. So, we're just here for the entitlements, and we're not coming in for any waivers or variances. We're intending to build per your code, but we would be happy to talk to any residents who might have questions about what that development could look like. This shows you the concept plan. And again, the concept plan isn't necessary at the time of these entitlements, but we wanted to show you the layout with the entrance and exit off of Lane Park Road. And you can see that State Road nineteen, that's the intersection that we're at. In terms of traffic, I'm going to bring up our traffic engineer so he can give you an overview of the study we did, as well as a comparison between what commercial would generate versus what we have for residential uses.
Good evening, counsel. Last person with traffic plan and design over in Mayland. Thanks, Tara. So, I take a different approach when I do my traffic studies. Haven't worked with the city on municipal projects before. My intent is never to just come and do a traffic study and try to force it for you guys to accept my numbers. I try to evaluate the information that we have and we prune up where we can, we can do. So, this is a relatively small development, forty-six units. The land is currently, I believe, entitled for a hundred and forty-six, a hundred and forty thousand square feet of retail. So, in proportion to the trips that could be on this development, this site, if it were developed as retail, commercial, it's about seven thousand trips a day. In comparison, this project will generate under six hundred trips a day, which is obviously, I think, over a ninety percent reduction. In terms of turns and so forth, as I understand, as the residents have other concerns about the access and so forth, we have about under forty right turns or left turns on the access that we proposed on Lane Park right now. That equates to roughly just over three cars every five minutes, so relatively low volume. Just to go to, if you want mine, I'm clicking mine. There were three questions that came up, and one of them concerned the widening of State Road nineteen. My understanding from reaching out to DOT is that they are currently in a PNE planned phase. They plan to do a PNE in, start in twenty nineteen. We don't know if it's which quarter of twenty nineteen, but I think there's a general understanding that there's going to be need to improve nineteen. That is on DOT's horizon. Right now, it's in the planning stage. There's no plan currently or funded for construction. We had a question about why is there an access on Lane Park Road that we moved to nineteen? In traffic engineering terms, which not everyone agrees with, but in just technically speaking, State Road nineteen is arterial roadway, whereas Lane Park Road is a local collector roadway. The function of nineteen inherently is to move traffic. The function of Lane Park Road inherently is to collect traffic and take it to the arterial. So, typically, it's a safer alternative to put access on Lane Park Road. We also had a question on, is there going to be a westbound right turn lane into the development on the access? The response to that is basically, the access is currently spaced at four hundred and fifty feet. I believe the state standards and county standards are about four hundred and forty feet. What that means is that it needs spacing criteria in terms of separation from the signal at Lane Park Road and nineteen. You know, from when we did our analysis from an operation standpoint, intersection analysis to level service standpoint, I believe it was level service C or better, which without the need for a right turn lane. Additionally, the county has a couple standards, but one of their standards is that during the PM peak, if you have over fifty vehicles generated to the development, generates more than fifty trips, and then a right turn lane will be warranted. In this case, we're at forty-six units, and we generate under fifty trips. So, just from that peak hour perspective, a right turn lane would not be warranted. However, at this point, you know, we request a zoning adjustment. Typically, turn lanes and so forth are discussed and negotiated with the company during the site plan application. So, I'm available for any questions on the traffic study. And if I could take an hour or...
Is that... Did your presentation, Mr. Hoaden?
I just have two more slides. So, in terms of looking at the criteria for approval tonight, under section four nineteen of your code, the first is whether the effect of the amendment on a particular property and the surrounding properties has been analyzed favorably, and staff has agreed that this is an appropriate use for the property. Our property is surrounded by ag and residential uses, and our request is actually a downzoning from a commercial use on this site, and we believe that's more compatible with the existing patterns of development in this area. The second is the relationship of the amendment to the city's comp plan with consideration as to whether we further the purposes. If you look at policies of your comprehensive plan, one of them specifically notes that the city shall develop a broad diversity of residential densities. This is a very low-density subdivision that we're proposing. And so, we believe this fits within one of the comprehensive plan policies that you all have set forth. And with the rezoning and the change in the future land use to low-density, that will be a compatible zoning with a future land use map designation. Finally, is the need in the justification? And there's a couple reasons why this one's important. First is the demand for residential in this area, but the second is we have truly spent thirteen years trying to make anything else work. So, we are trying to get commercial uses, and these are all people that we've negotiated with and companies that we try to put LOIs out to and work with to get this site. Publix, Walmart, Walmart Neighborhood Market, Family Dollar, Dollar General, Dollar Tree, Indecy, Save-A-Lot, Aldi, blah blah, Seven-Eleven, McDonald's, Fifth Third Bank, et cetera. Perform studies and pro formas, looking at tax credit housing, memory care, senior care. I mean, all of the potential commercial uses permitted under C two per that existing ordinance were exhausted. And none of them came up, and nobody wants to put any commercial on that corner. And a lot of the reason is because you need rooftops if you're ever going to have commercial properties coming in here as a viable component to your community. And so, this is an area that needs those rooftops. This is a very small, low-density subdivision. It doesn't have an adverse impact on your roadways, and it provides amenity that would be beneficial, especially according to the market studies, we felt. A lot of people want to live in Tarry, and we feel that this fits with the character of the community. Happy to answer any questions you have. I won't get back up again and do this all, but of course, with the change in the comprehensive plan to make it consistent with our request for zoning, we would request approval on both of those matters consistent with your staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Hoaden. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. I do have two people that have turned in, request to speak. Right now, I'm going to start off with, I believe it's Sheila Shores?
Short.
Short.
Hi, I'm Sheila Short. I examine one, two, three, two, seven, Lane Park Road. This development abuts my backyard. You know, I do not want to see it come in because everything in my area is on one acre to two acres. This is going to be sixty feet wide, like one sixty. I just think that's too small. If they do happen to put it in, I'll have a big wall on my back, Poppy Line, and on the east side of my fence. east side of my fence, Poppy Line, because I don't want to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have, looks like John Bolman.
Yeah, I do not oppose a rezoning request. I am the owner of the property on the northeast corner, it's three acres there, and I'm agricultural, and I really am agricultural, and I have been just growing, and I'm harvesting this year, and I'm concerned about, she mentioned that she's going to address the buffer zone, buffering the property, and she requires for building permits and heavy. I'm very concerned about the wall, a substantial wall. They're going to pay power charges if they don't, and believe it or not, I like raising worries. I've had a good thing doing it, and I mean, you wouldn't believe it, I go over there and trim stuff myself and all that, and I'm harvesting a good crop this year, and yes, I'm impacted by breeding, and I've taken out a bunch of trees. The dog died, the trees I planted about seven years ago are producing like crazy right now, so I already even sold my crop division. I'm concerned about the buffer. That's probably a little premature, but that's important. The gentleman next to me, Mr. Jelsma, he was unable to be here, he has the same feelings. He's ag also, he's not using his ag right now, but he was worried about the buffer as well. Thank you, Tori.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sider, would you like to address...
Understood, and certainly during the period when we come in with our subdivision, almost all the subdivisions we've ever done have a wall around them, whether it's brick or masonry, again, that's something we'll figure out depending on the style of the subdivision we're doing, but there will certainly be all of the code setbacks landscaping, and we'd be happy to talk over to these folks afterward to make sure that they're in correspondence with us and with the developer when we're going into those specific details on the plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak with this item? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close this to public comment, and I'm going to open it up to council. Councilor, do you have any questions?
I have to move to approve. Ordinance 18-22.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So we have a motion and a second. How much would you like to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes 5-0. All right, and we are going to move on to item number nine, transmittal hearing. I believe this is a companion to the ordinance we just passed, this ordinance 2018-23, Lane Park Commons, LSFLU, 13.19 acres in northwest order, State Road 19 and Lane Park. Mike Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2018-23 is a companion ordinance for this property, proposes a future land use change from commercial to low-density residential to allow 5.6 dwelling units per acre. It is not expected that this project will have a negative impact on city services. At their November 15 meeting, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of ordinance 2018-23. Staff recommends that city council moves to approve ordinance 2018-23, amending the future land use of this property from commercial to low-density residential.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing that, the council.
I'll go for it.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes 5-0. All right, we are going to move on to general government. We have tab 12, Greenbrier at Baytree subdivision, preliminary plat, immediate development. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. Greenbrier at Baytree is a proposed residential subdivision located on the north side of Dead River Road, west of Captain Haynes Road. The subdivision is 91.04 acres in size and consists of 145 lots for single-family dwellings, and it's staff's position that that is permitted under Plan Development Ordinance 91-15. A preliminary plat for Greenbrier has been submitted by the developer. This document has been reviewed by city staff, and it is staff's position that it meets requirements of the City of Taveris Land Development Regulations and the City of Taveris Comprehensive Plan. The city's concurrency management system will ensure that levels of service will not be degraded beyond the adopted levels for all regulated public facilities. Developer is finalizing an agreement with Lake County for improvements at the developer's cost to the intersection of Dead River Road and State Road 19 that will mitigate the subdivision's traffic impact on that intersection. This preliminary plat is for evaluation purposes only, and approval does not constitute the subdivision of land. If approved, the developer may proceed with engineering for all necessary infrastructure systems for staff to review. However, city staff will not grant approval of subdivision construction plans until the approved developer's agreement with Lake County has been received by the City of Taveris. The developer must also prepare a final plat of the property for council consideration, and at this time, staff is recommending that council moves to approve the preliminary plat for Greenbrier at Baytree subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Is the applicant available?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Ted Wicks, Wicks Engineering Services. We do not have a formal presentation on this since it is simply a preliminary plat under a subdivision plan for your approval in the general government, and we'll be available to answer any questions. We would simply recommend, ask that you adopt or approve the preliminary subdivision plan based on staff recommendation.
Okay.
We're available to answer any questions.
All right, so I'll have you back up here after we take a public comment. So at this time, we are going to go ahead and open it up for a public comment, and as I stated before, when we come up, if you can state your name, address, and please keep it to three minutes or less. All right, we are going to start off with, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more, because I've been involved in this particular application. I just wanted to review with council again what we are looking at tonight. You looked at a couple of rezonings so far tonight. This is not a rezoning. This property has a zoning and a planned development zoning dating back to the original Baytree development. What you have here for you tonight is the, an application for preliminary plat, and I didn't make you disclose whether you talked to anybody about that, because this is not one of those instances where courts have said that you all are sitting as judges and weighing evidence. Instead, you're sitting sort of with your clerk's hats on here, and you're giving a stamp of approval to something that is ministerial in nature, that is, have they complied with the requirements to submit the first step in our three-step subdivision process? And there's a cookbook of things they have to put on the preliminary plat, and Mike then checks that, and on plats, those come to you all for final approval. So you have that ministerial function as opposed to a discretionary or a legislative judicial function. There is ongoing debate between the applicant and the residents, both of whom have good counsel, as to whether or not this subdivision meets all the requirements of the city's codes and comp plans. And I've weighed in on that, too. I think I sent an opinion to John and Mike, and I think that forwarded to you all. But I think for purposes of tonight, we're not issuing a development order that somebody can go out there and stick a shovel in the ground or sell a lot by deed or anything like that. This is the first step of a preliminary plat review. It will be coming back to you for a final plat review, and some of those arguments may be raised again, and that might be more germane at that time. So just as you hear from people in the audience, including councils, I know I see a council for the residents here, I don't know about for the applicant, but as you hear those arguments, just remember, keep kind of the different stats on this particular application. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open up for public comment, so if we could have Jan Holbrook.
I would refer our representative to speak first. Speak first, is that possible?
No, speaking of me, can I speak first?
Yes, you may. And what's your name? Can you state that for the clerk, please?
My name is Joshua Bills from Hung Law Firm. Our address is 601 South 9th Street in Leesburg, Florida, and as the city attorney did state there, ongoing conversations, I will try to keep my comments brief. I did submit a five-page letter to the city attorney and to Mr. Fitzgerald today. Basically, the first and major objection that we have to this is, we don't believe that ordinance 91-15 is valid at this time. We believe that under the Land Development Regulation, Section 10-4C, there was not continuing development on the property, and under that Land Development Regulation, the ordinance 91-15 would have expired. There are other objections we have to this ordinance. It's an old ordinance. It's very sparse, it's very vague, it's very ambiguous in its terms. It is not the type of planned development ordinance that you would see today. And in that light, our objection mainly rests with the fact that the application for this, and I understand this is not a cause of judicial hearing, but the application, the underlying application is underneath this ordinance, and if the ordinance is invalid, then we feel that it should not go forward, and the applicant should have to reapply as they have applied for, under that ordinance. There are other items that I listed in the letter. I would just state that we have concerns that the planned development does not meet the Conformed Land Development Regulations. There isn't a lot of harmony between the proposed plat and the surrounding areas. For instance, the Baytree is a 55-miler community, and the proposed development would not be a 55-miler community. Additionally, we don't believe that the proposed plat meets the comprehensive plan of the city, the goals and the objectives of the comprehensive plan, and finally, we don't, there was legal opinion that was provided regarding the age restriction issue from the attorney for the applicant. We believe that there are discrepancies within that opinion that is not sufficient to be relied on by the city. Again, I've written out these objections in the letter, and I would like to be able to submit it for the record, and I'm happy to answer questions any minute later on.
I think you should file that with the clerk. Go back to your objection here to that.
Then if you file it with the record...
And I've already confirmed to Mr. Bills and to council that their positions are stated, and they're in their record, and the record...
The record is complete. All right, thank you.
And just one last thing, with respect to my argument regarding that it doesn't conform to Land Development Regulations and creates disharmony, I think you're about to hear many voices speaking to that issue of disharmony between the proposed plat and what is already developed there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Holbrook, would you like to speak?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sure most everybody in this room knows how unhappy we are of the Baytree community of 55-plus. I have been there for 25 years. We moved there for 55-plus so that we could live out on remaining eyes and not have to deal with children, not the white children, but the idea is peaceful, quiet, and we had golf course at the time. Since that golf course is closed, we did not have the opportunity to buy the golf course. That's another story, but it's back. The golf course was sold to the person who now owns it, and he's coming forward and wanting to put a multifamily community of 145 or 146 homes. We have 215 homes, and they're going to completely surround us and come into and around some of our houses. Majority of our people, there's two building examples sitting right here, our elderly people, they are many that are walkers, they're the negotiators, they have to cross the street to get the mail. We have sidewalks which belong to the city. When they milk their dogs, which has been their way of life for the last 20 to 25 years, my first home we built there was 1992. We built another one in 2001, and I decided that I wanted to die there, that's going to be in Miami. This has come up, it's completely different. We have one entry into our subdivision. We have had little or no crime in the 25 years that have been there. You put three entries in there, that's asking for crime. You've got the paper, you turn on the television every day, and you see where there's crimes, and a lot of the other communities around us that have a way in, a way out, and it's much more safe for us to have just one. Don't know what, nobody has mentioned it, if there is a danger of evacuation. We have so many people down Dead River Road now, and there's all these others that have been before us, knows what it is trying to get in and out. If you put another 145 homes where we are, and I understand you passed 100 and some homes at the top of the deal by the roads, how many more people is that going to put in that's going to have to get out, if and when, hopefully not, the time will come. We have a clubhouse.
Thank you, that was three minutes. Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
We have a clubhouse and swimming pool, and you tell me how you're going to keep all of those kids out of that swimming pool.
Thank you. And next we have, I apologize, it's Dick, don't worry.
Oh, that's me, question.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're going to pass? Okay, all right. Next we have Tom Bergen.
I've been called worse than that, that's been good. I'm going to move this up a little bit, because Jan's my next-door neighbor, and she was a little shorter. Anyway, she's covered everything quite well right there, and our attorney has covered well, and I think there is some clarification that has to go on that, so I'll go through this list quickly. But I also have, for your benefit, I had sent over through Mike's staff there, Antonio had sent you a copy of an eight-item document there that you should have in each one of your folders. Have you got you? Did you get that? Okay, that makes sense that you have that, and you understand what I'm doing here. I'll just skip through a few things, because we could go on here all night, don't need to do that. Our biggest concern really is the age-restricted situation that we have with 55 and over. Jan covered that well. Can't emphasize it enough, that's why we bought there. We started out playing golf at that golf course in 94, and ended up running there from 1996 until 2004, when we bought our home, my wife, Ann, and myself. Ann, I'm very pleased with what the situation is. We have our own clubhouse, there's a lot of advantages to being there. We like what we have. I'm not anxious to die, Jan, but I'll do it there, too, if you want. So my concerns with that 55 and over is certainly the safety situation. She talked about that with kids. Not that we don't like kids, I have my kids here, one of them's still here now, and grandkids, so I know what that is. But again, the reason that we did this was we purchased it, or a particular reason. I mean, we could have bought any place we wanted to. There are a lot of homes around Taveris and Mop Doran, Leesburg, and wherever. We like the area, and we want to stay here. And I guess my concern is that whether or not the city, and you can't answer this tonight probably, but whether the city can actually force us to have somebody on the outside by the nature of what the proposal is, when we want to stay as 55 and over, and somebody wants to do it something else. Everybody's talking about the access to Taveris and city merchants coming down Dead River Road to 19. You know what the situation is there, I know you've been approached about that before, so I don't need to elaborate on that. I'll skip item seven. I'm still concerned about the storm water because parts of Bay Tree are in a plain flood plain area, and existing retention, water retention ponds are necessary for safety for everybody. There's one homes proposal on Canary Boulevard that goes through a water retention area. Goes right through, what was the 14th hole of the golf course? And in front of the tee box, there's a water retention area, and then you go to the, to the green. It's a good hole. They had a hole in one there once. I, I know Mike, from what your people said, that really the procedure goes that St. John's isn't contacted until after the next phase of this proposal we go through. Is that correct? You wouldn't contact him for an opinion?
St. John's Water Management District would be contacted by the developer's engineer, and that engineer would apply for St. John's permitting to construct the subdivision.
Right. But that doesn't happen in this phase. That has to go to the construction phase, right?
That would, that's correct.
That's what I understood from Antonio. Okay. I just want to clarify that. All right. Last thing, I'm, I'll go to three in 15 seconds. Are you going to have a place like this? Are they going to put in a reclaim water situation like Phil's used to working with? Is that going to be a requirement? Do you do that with anything now that develops?
Yeah, they're, they're going to be required to connect the reclaim.
Yes.
Yes. Develop, yeah, we require.
Well, that's a good program. We spent $350,000 to do it. It's working well, and we've had good cooperation on it. We've toured Phil's facilities.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have Jim Keery.
My name is Jim Keery. I live in Bay Tree, 705 Punisher Way. Right behind my house is going to be eight houses, 30 feet behind my house. I'm going to be looking at the back of the houses with all the kids' toys and the junk and everything else. And the kids, if you look at the plat, there's homes west of us, and there's homes east of us. Those kids are going to be running between our houses across the streets, over to their buddies on the other side, over by 13, 14, and 15, and 16, and 17. And those kids are going to be running back and forth over to the ones on 2, 3, 4, and We've lived in Bay Tree, and we bought 19 years ago specifically for the retirement part as being 55 and over. And I really don't see where you can allow multifamily homes to totally surround us and engroup us. You people are all elected officials by the people for the people. So, please, consider the people on this end. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mary Christmas.
Let's see. We have Tom, Tom Bance.
I don't know why I'm coming up here for, it's all been said. Yeah, Tom Bance, 26, 59, Bay Water Management. I agree with what has been said. I, what I have curious is why the city would allow non-disstricted housing in the middle of three communities. Fox Run is not 55. Carroll Carers is 55. And of course, Bay Tree is 55. And you're putting or going to allow 140-some homes in the middle of three communities of all 55 and over? And everything else I have to say is already been said, so I'll save my three minutes till later.
Thank you very much.
If you've got any questions, I'll be glad, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Now, we have Bill White.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Bill White. I reside at 1785 San Palm Drive in Hocke. I'm here to represent my mother, who resides at 414 Bay Tree Boulevard. The, the sole reason for me here, coming here today, is to enter into the record an alternate plan that would reduce the intermingling of the two developments. Currently, they're showing the connection in the front center drive aisle, and I think if they did some kind of a full sacking and a reorientation, they'd at least eliminate the connectivity between the two, should this move forward if the legal arguments and other arguments don't, don't suffice. So, I don't know. Who are you?
Who do I go ahead?
You can put it to the clerk for the record. Just bring it up here when you're done with your three minutes.
Okay. No, that's, that's it. That's it.
We'll take it, limit the interminglings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this? Mr. Smith, would you like to address anything that's been brought up by the?
Thank you very much. We have no additional comments. We'll simply stand on the record as presented. Staff recommendation again is for approval. We understand the conflicts that they mentioned about the 55 older restricted in our single-family community. We respect that. We've done a good job, in my opinion, to provide some separation so that those uses can continue to exist.
Please do, please.
And just to reiterate that there have been legal opinions submitted to, to the council regarding the 55 and older issue as it relates to our 145 units. We've also addressed, from a legal standpoint, the apparent claims that this does not have vested rights. We simply stand on the record as presented.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, but I would like to go back to our attorney if I could. Could you address the 55 and up concern residents are bringing up?
Sure. The city of Taveries doesn't impose 55 and year-old, year-old restrictions. That's not a municipal issue, at least not by the city of Taveries. There are federal 55 and over regulations that some communities have that are voluntarily placed by the landowner, by the developer on the residents, and those are usually in the form of restrictive covenants. There are restrictive covenants at the, at Bay Tree that, that limit it to the so-called 55 and over. It's actually, it's a smattering of, it's an average age of 55, nobody less than 40, 80% over 55. But those restrictions, when they were reported, don't apply to the property that's the subject of this application. They were excluded by the original developer from applying to this particular property. So, they don't apply to that. The city of Taveries doesn't have any restrictions like that. These are all internal developer build. These people could restrict their property if they wanted to, but we don't have any power to make them restrict their property.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the council. Mr. Smith, do you have any questions?
So, I was sitting here looking at all of our paperwork, and on the back of our tab, there is the ordinance 9115 that has some drawings of buildings on it. That's not what we're looking at, right?
No, sir. No, sir. We're not, we're not looking at a rezoning. This is a preliminary plat that, that attachment to the ordinance is an approved attachment to ordinance 91-15. These are all, Commissioner Smith, Councilman Smith, this is a single-family, no multifamily in our project. And the lots sizes are actually a little bit larger than what's in Bay Tree at this point. Bay Tree has a mixture of multifamily and single-family. Our 145 units will all be the single-family units.
So, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little confused on, can you slide back one slide, Mike? See, see where those homes are in the middle? Are those getting demolished?
That's existing Bay Tree.
That's existing Bay Tree, right? So, and this is going to be a new development, correct? A new developer and all that kind of stuff? So, the city of Taveries has ordinances to build a wall. Are they going to be able to build a wall around their existing plat? How, how is that going to work?
You don't have to buffer between single-family and single-family.
Okay. So, that's all you're doing, commercial to single-family?
Now, we have in our plat, in our proposed project, we're providing a 15-foot buffer in the form of the easement that will be over there to reclaim water line system. That they, we, when we plant and record, we will dedicate that to the existing Bay Tree HOA, and in fact, it will become their property. They can do anything they want to in there if they want some additional buffering from single-family to single-family. And for those lots that back up each other.
Yeah, I'm glad you reminded me about the single-family, single-family. That's what I was confused on. That's all I had, Mayor. I'm glad you have any questions.
I understand this was the preliminary plat, so they're trying to move towards to do additional studies or surveys, correct?
What they will move forward with is subdivision construction plan, which will be additional surveying, additional permitting through outside agencies, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, St. John's Water Management District, Fish and Wildlife, if necessary. Staff will review those plans.
And what would be the effect if we voted against it then?
The property would, in staff's, in staff's opinion, the property can be developed as single-family residential. If you vote against it, you're voting against the configuration of that single-family residential as it was presented.
Just for the comfort level of those folks in the audience, we have had contact with the Water Management District. They have been on-site. They have verified our wetlands line. We've set up buffers for that. And we've also reviewed the existing stormwater system with them, and we're prepared to move forward with formal permitting of that for the additional lots. With respect to the preliminary plat, it needs to be reminded, I think, what Mr. Williams indicated, that this is not necessarily a discretionary decision. If we meet the regulations under, under subdivision regulation, manual regulations, what, what is there to deny? I guess that's my question.
Councilor Smith, do you have any questions or others?
Mr. Williams, now. Oh, sorry. My phone. I think I understand the position that we're in. We can't do things that are arbitrary and capricious. Mr. Williams, is there a legal reason for us to, I don't see a legal reason for us to deny this. Well, I don't think we have the capacity to deny it with what's going on with what's in progress.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of cities review preliminary plats, at least on ministerial staff basis, where the staff just goes through the checklist and makes sure that the streets are the right length and the right width, and the lots are the right sizes. Our particular code preserves that approval authority to you all. So, but it's, it is somewhat different. It's not based on evidence or facts that you've heard. Well, it is based on evidence that we've complied with the plat, that our staff has told you that, that in his opinion, they comply with the requirements of the plat. I think that this is a ministerial approval vote for you all. I don't think it grants a development order that they can act on, but it allows them to go to the next step and bring something more into their construction plans, and then ultimately, if they do develop a final plat, that, that you will be able to look at, and that it does constitute a development order. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir, 100%.
Anything else?
No, sir. That is all the questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm still, I mean, even though we haven't really talked about this, that's, that's just more houses on the road that can't accommodate what it has right now, or that new house is going in, so. I mean, this, I, I have noticed for a fact, it's just a common sense approach. I was just on the road today and sat through two lights long. I mean, it was, I ran it when it was yellow, I hit it. It was turning red because I'd already sat through two. The line was, the line was a quarter mile back on Dead River at 1:00 this afternoon.
Certainly appreciate that. In, in light of Kirby Smith's comments, we did do one of those directed traffic studies. And we found that on our projections, actually 25% of our, our, our traffic will actually go down campaigns. It is, it is very scientific. It's been proven. The scope of how we, how we just done is, is acceptable within the traffic community. And I think it's been mentioned that we are a part of whatever approvals have to be made at 19 and Dead River Road. Our project cannot put a shovel on the ground until a lateral agreement is executed and physical construction occurs. So, if you have some comfort level that traffic will be approved, that's what's being done at this point, and we are a part of that. So, we can't avoid that issue and move forward with it.
Anything else? Okay. I'm sorry, sir. Public comments are already closed.
They are, they're closed?
I'm sorry.
I can't open my mouth without anything?
No, I'm sorry, sir. It's already been, we've already taken public comment.
The next goal, correct?
Yes. Thank you. That's, this is the way that we do things. I'm sorry. I mean, I gave everybody the opportunity to speak. Right now, it's time for council to address all questions that were asked, and that's what we're doing right now. So, that's just the way that we do things here. But I want to thank you very much for that. My question is, maybe Chief Lewis and Chief Keith. One of the things that was brought up was about EMS access to the backside. Is there anything that you could address as far as that goes?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, for the audio record, it's Richard Keith, your YRG. So, Mayor, you were asking me about EMS access, I think, in Bay Tree.
I know the president's brought up concern about the backside.
Or even fire truck or police car access. I mean, it's, it's all access, right? So, we are, the fire department and EMS are consistently hitting our, our response timelines. All right? So, there are peak times, there are busy times. We've already talked about the intersection with 19 and Dead River Road. That's a work in progress. So, we continue to do what we can. We know that growth is, is inevitable, and that's why we look to road planners to provide adequate roads. So, I'll answer your question.
Thank you. All right. With no more discussion, who wants to, who wants to come to?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three to two. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your respect. And we're going to take a five-minute resumé back out.
On 19, which impacts everyone in my community because it's the only road we have to go anyplace. My concern is, even if Dead River Road is wide to allow better access to 19 from all of these new developments that are being put in there, which I support from the city's standpoint of adding more housing and getting increased taxes and everything. My concern is, it's, it's going to be worse on 19 because that turn lane going from 19 onto Dead River Road from either direction is very short. So, if you have all these extra cars coming out in the morning, which the traffic studies are saying you have to widen the road for, you're going to have all those cars coming back in the evening, and it's just going to, my concern is, it's just going to back up 19. I know you can't do anything about that, and I know 19 is not going to be widened, like, in the foreseeable future because obviously, our community looks at... like, in the foreseeable future, because obviously, our community looks at that frequently because of the bridge situation that we're going through right now. But I do think that it's a concern that needs to be addressed, because it is gonna put a lot more traffic on Nineteen, and in the evening, busy hour, when people are coming back home, they're still gonna have very short access lanes to turn onto Dead River Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience have any more comments, questions, concerns? I don't have any close or public comment. Council, if you have any questions? Council would like to move.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that, motion passes, five to zero. We're gonna move on to tab fourteen, Shirley Shores, Dead River Lakes Development Statement Agreement.
I think our city attorney is gonna sign this. Is that what he ran? Sure. You all will remember the great saga of Shirley Shores zoning dispute. Some degree of sadness that I could say goodbye to Jimmy and Brent tonight and not get harassing emails from him anymore. We, after the zoning hearing, the zoning action took place by the city, an appeal was filed, that appeal was stayed, and the court ordered mediation between us, and we had a lengthy day-long mediation here at City Hall. It was none other than Carlos Alvarado, if you care if you guys remember him from the, he was my hero in the sixties. He looks a lot different now, but he was a good dogged mediator, and we hammered out mediation, mediated settlement by about seven o'clock that night. The settlement agreement has been reduced to writing and signed by all parties, it's in your packet. Basically, if, you know, we can go into as much detail as you want to, but it increases the number of lots to an agreed number of, I think it's sixty-nine now. It increased the number of lots that could run on Shirley Shores Road. It had some other considerations in there that were slightly different from what we had, that the council approved, but that were critical to the residents. It contains an annexation policy statement that I offered, and that Mike and John have reviewed and approved, that there was concern that the city was going to try to involuntarily annex properties that were out there that didn't want to come into the city, and didn't want to have voluntary annexation, or didn't want to acquire city sewer, and we stated our current policy as to that, this is option. The, I think we agreed that the new ordinance, because the change in the zoning is going to be subject to an annexation, basically consent, amending ordinance that we'll do in the next couple of meetings once the settlement agreements approved. Brent Spain representing the residents, and Jimmy Crawford representing the developer are here to answer questions if you have any. Mike, did I miss anything? And we can go into as much detail or as little as you want.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions of the attorneys of the president here? Council would like to move on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that, motion carries, five to zero. We're going to move on to tab fifteen, the petition to offer to sell Brett Stover baseball complex to school board. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. This is my work for you tonight. Three years ago, we sent a letter to the chairman of the school board seeking their ideas or thoughts on the possibility of them purchasing Brett Stover's course complex from this city. You know that we co-shared a space with the high school boys and the girls softball program, and it's working out well. We are just asking you tonight if you would like us to send a letter again to them. We did not hear a response three years ago, but things changed. And so, we are happy to craft another letter of inquiry and send it to the school board to see if they have any interest in purchasing the complex from this city at an appraised value, fair market value, it's fifteen hundred dollars to have the property appraised, and if that's something that you would like us to evaluate, then we can do that. But for tonight's exercise, we're asking for your guidance on whether to send a letter of inquiry again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this? Council? Yeah, I think the intent was to send a letter to purchase it over time, on a one loan sum. Because we all know they had it for a one sum, but they may be able to, so that the letter's saying, I don't just say it's a first ever time. So, there, we should maybe, I like the idea of them in the letter, but maybe the letter give them a couple of options, versus a fair market value, either over time or one loan sum or whatever. What are they? Any other questions?
I had a question. You were talking about an appraisal would be some fifteen hundred dollars or something like that. Are you going forward with the appraisal or not going forward?
We're really seeking your guidance tonight. We can do that.
We wouldn't want to waste a dime on appraisal until we found out whether they were even interested in purchasing it, so we would not be requesting an appraisal. I think the letter will go first, give the two options that Councilmember Smith offered, and see if there's any response.
And no money gets spent.
Okay. And no money gets spent.
Yes, yes, that was my question.
Okay, I would like to move. Make a motion to have staff send Lake County school board a letter of interest for the purchase of Brett Stover field, either in one loan sum or over time.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing that, motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to tab sixteen, Horizon Project Teams. Does she agree?
This was David from the last meeting. We have Horizon teams for projects that are multi-year in nature. I've listed all nineteen of them. I do not necessarily need a board member for them, but I give you an opportunity to join one of our teams, and of course, no decisions are made by that one board member who's on the team. It's really joining the team as a sounding board, the decisions are made, it comes to the full council for full council deliberation. There are, there's the statement of Nineteen five six one four four eight corridor that's available. There's the gateway projects, the trail, the various amount of board, then the seaplane base rebuild, and then the emergency preparedness public safety Horizon team. Back to you, Council, to see if there's interest from council members to join one of these teams.
Also, I said, I don't know if there's any members that want to be interested in any of these items. I'm currently on the, only on the master plan update, but I was interested in either the YMCA trail or the seaplane's rebuild. Council, um, discuss where, anybody?
We'll go down line for each council member.
Do we want to go down each and say what we have?
No, you're talking about each council member.
Right.
Going down line by each council member, right? All right, so.
How about we start with, what?
I'll be on all of them. I, whatever other folks want, they take away, take away. What remains, I'm happy to help.
Well, I'm interested in the emergency preparedness and public safety team, mostly because I already volunteered to go to shelter as well, so I'm already kind of perfect. And I'm interested in the gateway for St. Clair, St. Clair because that is truly my route to and from work, and back home for the council, so those are the driven regular ones. Those are the ones I'd like to add, if anything.
Kirby, any more? Yeah, there's a, there's a couple things here. I am currently on the race relations. I really like the race relations, however, I think it would hold more value if the mayor was on the race relations, if you so wanted to be on it, but I will continue to be on it. But that's, I think it's an opportunity for us to punctuate a little more. I am currently on the oh four forty-one utility Bay, oh four forty-one to Bay Road, which is a direct line with the Mount Dora YMCA trail, and I've kind of dabbled in that with the Tiger grant already. I would like to be involved with that one. And I know you wanted to be involved with that one as well, and I also want to be involved with the seaplane base, so if you let me have the Tidoree Trail, do the seaplane base. I'll give you a G.I. joke. Anything else? Um, no, that's, that's. Lori?
Yes.
Interested in, do you have anything? Did you want anything?
I, I like everything I'm doing. Maybe the alternate race relations. Somebody could take that one, because I'm kind of loaded up with the other things I'm doing, and I'm just so deep into most of these projects, I don't want to walk away like that, so.
All right. Well, I would like to, so Kirby, you're saying that you would do the YMCA, because you're on the oh three one. So, yeah, if it were all right, I would like to take the seaplane base rebuild.
I'm gonna go ahead and summarize what I have right now, and tell me if I got it right or wrong. Item number twelve, St. Row Nineteen five six one four forty-eight corridor, that will be Roy. Race relations alternate would be Roy. North-South City Gateway, number sixteen, would be Amanda. The various Mount Dora YMCA trail would be Kirby. Seaplane base rebuild would be Troy. Emergency preparedness public safety Horizon team would be Amanda. Those are the changes I heard.
And then the race relations?
Oh, and the mayor would take race relations primary.
Sure. All right. That work everybody? All right. So, we are gonna move on to, let's see. City council board appointments at seventeen thirty-four.
Same situation here. This is a little different. These aren't teams for projects with more boards that you either appoint people or go on yourself. There are two vacancies now, and of course, we can discuss whether you've served enough time on some of the other boards and want to switch things up. Lake Community Action Agency, that agency provides assistance to those in financial need throughout Lake County, and they do serve citizens in the areas. I've been on that board, some of you have been on that board, so that's available. And then we have the Lake County Library alternate, and an opportunity to switch any of the ones around that you would like back to you. Mayor?
Okay. So, I guess we'll list up for discussion. We'll start with Amanda.
Can I revisit myself in the bicycle pedestrian committee? I need to see justice for instance, just to be sure of the YMCA trail.
What committee was that you were in?
The, the MPO, Bicycle Pedestrian Committee.
MPO. Oh, you're a slick.
It does sound quite nice. They almost never have meetings.
I would love, I would love to be on the Metropolitan Organization Twenty Thirty-Five Bicycle Path Committee.
Um, but I would want a thirteen alternate for the library advisory board.
Let me just jump, I've been on the MPO for, I think, ever since I've been on this board. It's a great networking opportunity. They have a meeting once a month, and I would be more than happy to serve as alternate. I know right now, Kirby, you're serving as alternate, would you be all right if I to go as alternate? That would be fine, man. If I had somebody to take that spot, though, I think, myself, I think that would be a great spot for Roy to use to do that. The newbie always gets MPO.
Everybody needs to learn that. We've all come in.
I think Roy would be good to go with the.
I believe y'all are taking advantage of that.
No. You wouldn't do that.
I think y'all, y'all realize our work also. When do these things do? When do they meet?
Seven o'clock at night, plenty of time, you can make that one.
Yep, we're good on that.
Once a month, maybe.
And the, 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 the Horizon teams.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. You're good for all of it.
Quarterly, you're good, you're good for all of it. Let me summarize.
I'm gonna say yes to whatever y'all think.
We've got Roy on the Lake Community Action Agency at seven P.M. meeting. We have Amanda as the alternate for the library advisory board. We have Roy as primary for MPO. We have Troy as alternate for MPO, and Kirby on the bicycle pedestrian committee.
That was good.
I'm concerned, because you're laughing.
It's initiation. We are going to move on to agenda tab eighteen, board appointment, planning and zoning board. This is me. There's currently one vacant seat on the areas planning and zoning board, with the remainder of a three-year term that will expire June two thousand nineteen. The city advertised the opening position and received applications from four of the, from the following four. It was Deborah Murphy, Gary Corner, James Sweets, and Robert Wolfe. You know, it was great to receive this many applications. I don't think in the past we really see this many. We're usually having to go out and beg people to be on these, so I think it's, it's great that we have this many applicants. Well, I reviewed all four of these applications, and all four were very qualified, and anyone would make a good board member. The person was not, this was not an easy decision, but with more approval of this person I am appointing is someone that I believe is passionate about the city of Tewerys, someone that has shown a real desire to be involved and engaged in the community, a good listener, respectful of others. They will bring a different viewpoint to the board, with a calm demeanor and the ability to work well with others. So, this time, I would like to recommend that we appoint Gary Corner to the planning and zoning board.
I just want to point out that Gary, Gary is here.
Gary, would you like to say anything while you have the opportunity?
I think this has been a real opportunity to be baptized this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and we are going to move on to?
On the record show that there was support for the mayor's recommendation by all the council members.
All right, we're gonna move on to agenda tab number nineteen, Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, SRF, Lake Francis, LS forty-nine, water piping construction.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is to request council approval for Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute loan documents with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, also known as FPP. This is a state revolving drinking water loan, again, project three five oh nine six one. This will provide construction funding for the Lake Francis distribution piping replacement. This is loan number four for the Lake Francis project. A timeline summary of what has been approved thus far includes loan number three five oh nine fifty, which was the planning activities for, for the project, and the amount of the loan was twenty thousand dollars, and it was approved October eighteen, two thousand seventeen. Then, on November first of two thousand seventeen, this board approved Resolution two thousand seventeen, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash eleven, authorizing the loan application for the project, water and sewer, estimated at six million nine hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars. Then, this board authorized Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-four, authorizing SRF loan three five oh, three five one. Then this board authorized Resolution 2018-24, authorizing SRF loan 350, 351 for construction activities in the amount of $6,653,450. Then this board also approved Resolution 2018-25, authorizing SRF loan 350360 for Lake Francis just water distribution piping design in the amount of $77,000. This resolution again authorizes the execution of the documents by the mayor with FDEP for construction activities in the amount of $835,180. This includes capitalized interest, contingency, as well as oversight by the engineering of record. Semi-annual debt service is estimated at $23,571 on semi-annual basis and the annual interest rate is 1.01 and the term is 20 years. There's a quick summary for council also at the bottom of your agenda summary. The options before you is to move to approve Resolution 2018, authorizing the mayor to execute SRF loan 350361 loan documents in the amount of $835,180, including capitalized interest, with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Agency, or do not approve the resolution. I think that's it. I think if you have, if council should have questions on the project itself, Phil might be able to address those. But this is straightforward and we have discussed it before. We brought forth the design that we'd be bringing back this loan to the construction portion of the piping.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? I just had a little question. This is, I'm going to say, this is one of three projects, correct?
This is one large project called the Lake Francis Lift Station 49. There are two portions of the project. One is wastewater, one is water. They both have different funding sources through FDEP. You have authorized a design, a preliminary design, which was the $20,000 loan. Then you authorized a loan.
And I think the question is, is there are three components to this project, water, sewer, and lift station?
Yes. I'm sorry, I was talking there.
I just, I just need someone to say to me like, this has to be paid, this is a lot of money. It has to be paid back. We have a plan. We've calculated this out. We know what the payment schedule is and we have a plan to pay for this. It's not that I answer with anything.
Yes, we do. We do a rate study every five years. This project is included in the rate study analysis and we're in the process of a rate study now that we'll come back to this board in the spring and this project is still in that rate study analysis.
Okay. Contemplating that this is going to be covered and paid back and everything's fine, is that going to detract or disturb anything else that's like permanent or ongoing or recurring?
No.
That was all the questions I had to make.
Any other questions? All right, I would like to.
I'd like to move to approve Resolution 2018-28.
We have motion to second on favor. I oppose. Gary, that motion carries by zero. Moving on to tab number 20, Performing Arts Center, Public Committee Results, Community Service.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. We are seeking some direction from you tonight and the news is, we are not asking for you to vote on whether or not we should build a performing arts center in this city. That is a conversation for later. Tonight, after a beautiful meeting, public charrette, the first meeting that we held to discuss this performing arts center and where it might be built and how it might look, we were all very surprised. For those of you who were able to attend, we estimated up to 250 people came out for this meeting. We did not expect that, quite frankly. I wasn't certain how many would come and we were pleasantly surprised. And just to tell you that there were not 250 people slamming their fists on the table saying, we don't want this thing. They were there to listen, learn, to give their ideas. And so we were so encouraged by that. And I am veering off a bit, but I wanted you to know that backstory. It's an important one to tell and share. So tonight, this agenda summary, if you will indulge me for a moment, and I talk very rapidly, I would like to break it up into three pieces. I'm going to do some introductory remarks here in a moment and I'm going to introduce Charlie Rogers. Charlie is going to come up and say a few things and then they are going to deliver the results of that study to you. Very interesting. And it's really a very succinct presentation. It just shows you the empirical data that was collected the night of the event. And then the, at the end, we have several options for you to consider and hopefully we will get to consensus and you will tell these folks which site you would like to see the future performing arts center built on, if we should have the fortune to build one here. So in, in, the reason why that is important to give them that answer is because they will then be able to move on with the study that we hired them to conduct. So they need that information from you tonight and that's where we hope that we will be able to take you. So thank you for joining us on this important journey. So, and this is the first phase of this study, by the way. I believe that is all that I have at this moment. I do want you to know that there are several members of the hassle team here, so they are prepared to answer your questions. So the questions of the audience, if they do not cover all that during their delivery, they are here, they have information for you as you need it. So feel free. Charlie, thank you.
Is there an answer on this?
Mike is yours, the answer.
You should. Do you go to the next slide? That'd be great. Thank you. On behalf of our team, very excited to be here this evening. We're about halfway through our study, as Roger suggested. We've got some great information and data showing tonight, along with the information gathered from the public session at the end was intended very well. And we learned from the last time we came here to bring a presentation that made you chair of the audience, so.
Smart.
We took that counsel from last time. We've got an agenda, we'll touch on briefly. I'm going to hand over a mic so we can go over some technical aspects and then Chris, who will handle some of the event and all of the data at the end and hand it back to us.
Thank you. One of the things that we did was to approach this blank faced and blank headed, if we will, in my case, that's true. And we, we looked at each site. I'm going to, I'm going to take this with me. Will this come out? I'm going to take this with me and come around to this side. And the first thing was, the first thing was to look at each site and say, how big is the site? Where are the sites? And we looked at each site for square footage. We walked around the site, took a lot of photos, looked at the trees, looked at the traffic, looked at the lights, looked at the, where the fire hydrants were, the manholes. I flipped the manholes off, looked down at the manholes. Phil Clark gave me a squadron of folks that helped me do that. And we looked to make sure that everything is as it should be, but everything's not as it should be. And we had a chance to make some of those corrections. Next slide, Mike. Thank you. The voice, the other mic on the other, we found it after all this time. This is a map that Don Griffey prepared, kind of in a series for Phil Clark about six months ago to get some FEMA funding underway. We get to see the sites as they are relative to each other and we get to see the blue pipes that are existing underground that help convey the stormwater to the southwestern structure that was built recently in the last few years. The problem is that the entire city of Taveras flows to the river, but if the piping in the, in the infrastructure isn't there to capture and intercept that water and take it to the, to your left, to the southwest, then it all continues to flow down and by the time it gets down here to this, what's called the square, we're sitting in angle deep water and any storm that, there's no way to fix that. So, next slide. We looked at the red pipe and on this side, if you'll show with me, the top button there, if you, if you would. The red pipes are what we would call, Mike, the next slide, first priority. There in the brand, we show that with building on the, the lower two sites, say the city hall site and.
The city hall site. And the library site, which is a standalone in the northernmost site, rated third in our preliminary assessment. So, that's a one-sided assessment. Our next opportunity was with, when Tamara mentioned, we needed to hear from those of you within the community that will ultimately be the users and the stakeholders within this community. So Mike, if you, if you could, we, we had an engagement event, a community engagement event, and I just want to editorialize for a second. I've been doing this for 40 years. I've conducted probably hundreds of charrettes and workshops. This one absolutely, absolutely was the most exciting and interactive I've, I've seen. And I wanted to show you just a few slides and Mike, if you could go through those. We took some photographs, certainly of the event and it was an event and we were so happy to see that interaction with the Taveras High School jazz ensemble. We had choirs, a harpist, a guitar player. We were set up to listen. We set up stations in every category to listen and to gather information from the stakeholders themselves. We wanted that information. We weren't here to persuade and to give our analysis. We were here to absorb the stakeholder and community interests and desires, whether they're positive or negative, and we wanted to, to certainly illustrate that to you this evening. So you can see, it was quite an enjoyable event from our perspective because it was in such a beautiful venue. The pavilion is just that and one we took maximum advantage of. And we, we had all of us as a design team deployed to be here to, to answer and to respond to the comments accordingly. So at this point, if we could, I'll, I'll turn it back over to Charlie so he can get right to the hard facts that we discovered. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And as Tamara mentions, widely attended and everyone who came was given a sheet to score and rank. We gave certain specific questions and asked that they turned in at the end of the night. We got over 100 responses, lots of comments. And you can see here, some of the comments are curious, some are very positive. And so this is encouraging and I think all this information is, is available to you. I want to get right to the study, if you would, Mike. The next slide. The first question I'll walk you through was just straight up, if you had a chance to rate the sites from the square, city hall, or the existing library site, where would you rank it? And so the data that we got back was 59% of the people who turned in ranked the square as their preference site, so that's a good showing that we won an election most years. But that was good data. The next question that we put on there was a little different. If the solution was to use all three sites and specifically putting the performing arts up at the square, using the city hall as parking and then, you know, using, keeping the library where it currently is, how would that be received? And so the feedback that we got there was, was interesting. There was an approval to 57% of the people thought that it would be a good idea to do the three-site solution, again, pointing to the direction of the lake side as a site where you should put the performing arts facility. The next question, well, two questions in fact, were about programming and the type of events that could be put on and we asked the audience to rank them from one to three, one being the most desirable, down to three, being least desirable. And so the data, we'll go through this kind of quickly on the next slide. With regards to a library, about half of the people thought it would be desirable to include the library as part of this new facility. It was pretty mixed on whether or not commercial venues should be part of the facility, pointing towards least favorable to include a community college as a partnership in this facility. Obviously, the theater, highly scored high. Art gallery, about half the people thought that it would be good to include space for this. Retail, like commercial food, very mixed. Museum, kind of mixed as to where it is. The white sliver, just to point out, means that people didn't actually circle a number on that survey, so not everybody circled every time. The garage, you know, whether or not the garage should be part of the facility, about half of the people are suggesting that parking needs to be close by. We had some flyers like East Sports, just to kind of see what kind of community we have, and that wasn't really of interest, but live music certainly was, comedy was, drama was, all sorts of things you would see in an act of performing arts. And then corporate events, not, you know, it was kind of mixed. A lot of people didn't want to answer that. Simulcast, not so much, and when it comes to talks or professional events, sort of a mixed bag. All great data that, that would help us, the team, working on the next step, which would be to program the facility. So the question next was, I want to counter parking and what would the preference would be if you're to, to attend this facility? Would it be valet, connected, or offsite? And valet was the least desirable of the options. Connected is certainly where people were driving to. Offsite, mixed bag, leaning more to least desirable site. So certainly the solution needs to have parking pretty close to the facility, maybe connected by a walkway, not too far away. And then, let's see, what else we have? That's it. That's, so those are the questions. Great data. And at this point, turn it back over to you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Charlie. And what we've included in the agenda summary, and if you will indulge me, there, there are options. It's, maybe it's a little confusing, maybe I'm the only one, but if I can read them, it might be helpful. We have listed as option 1A, to designate the Taveras Square as a location to complete the performing arts center feasibility study without the library included. 1B, designate the Taveras Square as a location to complete the performing arts center feasibility study with the library included at that site also. Option 2A, designate the Taveras City Hall property as a location to complete the performing arts center feasibility study with the library included on that site too. 2B, designate the Taveras City Hall property as a location to complete the performing arts center feasibility study without the library included. Designate 3A, the library property as a location to complete the performing arts center feasibility study with the library included at that site too. And then option 4A, designate the Taveras Square, this is like the hybrid version, if you will, as a location for the performing arts center with, and the Taveras City Hall property as the compatible parking garage, leaving the library on the side and expanding it in place where it is now. And we're just asking you to think and consider and talk among yourselves so that the audience to give us directions so these folks can move on with the final phase of their study. And that means by selecting one of these options. So thank you for indulging us.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. All right, so we had a discussion on sites in life, probably here from the audience. Here to the audience, first, anybody in the audience have anything they would like to say?
Obviously, it's great, you know, I serve as your representative on the county arts and cultural league. We need an arts center. It's a smart thing. It's a great economic driver, without a doubt. Consider if it's done on the square, not to have the parking there. We are an entertainment district. People walk up and down Ruby Street, enjoying the bars and the restaurants. If we have a parking attached to that, it will be a problem. Keep parking offsite by city hall so that we have folks walking around and enjoying our businesses. Thank you.
Denise Lohr, of Rural Harbor. Quite honestly, I heard something tonight that I, although I've lived in Taveras quite well, I never ran into angle deep water in the square, so I don't know where that came from. But I do recall when this company made their first presentation, there were a few other things that they didn't realize about Taveras. So I'm going to go back to the visioning session that was held several years ago. And one of the key discussions that was pretty vocal, as I recall, was at the time wanting the city to purchase the building that was on the property that's currently known as Taveras Square, knocking the building down and having that as an open venue so that there was an open venue from Main Street down to the lake and it could be seen and it could be opened out and used for multiple purposes, such as what it's currently been used for, having the Christmas activities in there, having a lot of different events in that open green space. As a matter of fact, in the master plan, it shows as an open green space. I was quite surprised to hear these results because as. because as I was at the meeting of 250-some people, the majority of the people I spoke to wanted the Performing Arts Center, if we had one, to be located behind the city square so that there was connected parking. One of the things this study showed, that they wanted connected parking. And I don't know of anyone that I talked to that thought connected parking meant put parking behind the City Hall and then walk to a venue someplace else. It was meant to be connected. And there's only one site where it can really be connected. But of all the people I spoke to, they were very, very adamant that they felt it should be behind the city square, both the City Hall, for several reasons, including what Lou just mentioned, that Ruby Street is an entertainment district and there's a lot of people walking up and down the street. They're going to the various restaurants and bars and enjoying it. And that it would be an opportunity for people from the Performing Arts Center to drive in off of that street, park at the Performing Arts Center, attend something at the Performing Arts Center, and still have very good access to go to the restaurants and bars and then go back to their parked car and have easy access out of the city. So I would be totally against it if you vote to put the Performing Arts Center in the square. Thank you.
Ben Shukum, 12619, Taveris. I moved here from California. It was in Orange County, which just flipped all their representatives, Democrat from Republican. And they have a huge entertainment complex there that is bigger than what they have in downtown Orlando. It was built by the developers and they've got the major shopping center there, kind of like the Calcutta. And they also have the Performing Arts Center, which has grown even more. And it was funded by pretty wealthy developers, actually. And the parking is everywhere. There is down underneath the square, you can go park in there for a price. And then they have parking elsewhere. But most people, they walk over to eat in the shopping center, which is probably about a block and a half away, two blocks. And, because that's the big shopping center. And then they walk across a walkway, across a major road, and they go down to the Performing Arts Center. Or they just drive straight there and they pay a stiff fee for the underground parking. But I just like to point out that not everybody wants to be right close. But on the other hand, here's a county where we have a lot of people that are retired and maybe don't want to walk two or three or four blocks. So just to keep that on it. I, I'd just like to help Performing Arts Center because they're great.
I'm Richard Root, 501 Juniper Way in Beatty. But I wanted to speak in favor of the Performing Arts Center. I've been in that business for over 40 years. And the things I see that this company came in to put before us are just outstanding. And I want to say that, I want to, I want to just tell everybody ahead of time, if you plan more than what you expect, you will reap more than you expect. And if we don't plan it large enough to get performing artists in here, we're going to limit ourselves on who comes in and who doesn't. So have that in mind when we're all thinking about this, that we need to build big enough to take care of people coming in, also to get the performers that we can get by having that. I dealt with that throughout my whole career, that some of the performance that I would want to come in would not come because we didn't have a civic center that was big enough. Because they said, no, we have to have at least 2,000 seats, and so forth. So that's just something that is in the back of part of thinking. But please, put it in your thinking as you are looking ahead and dreaming of what we could have as a city, performing whatever we want to perform. And we're able to do it because we have facilities that will house anybody that could come in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Council, what questions do you have?
So, so I'm understanding that you're wanting this council here today to give you a site that you'll move forward, correct?
That is correct.
And information that we've seen for about 15 minutes, no preset in our agenda. How is someone supposed to make an informed decision with this little time? Questions I have are, do you, it appears to only look at city-owned property. The property you looked at, was there a certain building size or a city capacity that you have for your study and this community deemed to be appropriate?
We negotiated a scope of work that we brought to the council. And then clearly said that we would only be looking at publicly owned properties together. And the first thing they were supposed to do was evaluate those, come back with a sheet like they did, get the input. And before they take it to this next level, which would be how big would it be, how many seats, how would you ingress, how would you egress, do a market analysis of what all the other ones are, what would be the market, what would be in there if we needed a site for them to do that evaluation. So this is the beginning of the evaluation process. And one of the things in the scope of work was for the council to pick one of the three locations that was publicly owned, a square, a City Hall, or a library. And so really, today, if you pick one of those, then, or if you need more time and you want to table it to January and pick it in January, either one's fine. As soon as we know what site this council wants further evaluated, they're going to spend the next four months doing the meat of the study. How much is it going to cost? How big is it going to be? Who's going to operate it? What's going to be in it? How are you getting traffic in and out of there? Where is everyone going to park it? They're going to answer all those questions. But we need a site, and we told them it had to be one of the ones that's publicly owned by the city.
So I remember the presentation. And you picked out three sites that you were going to look at. You were going to look at other sites as well, is what I thought. Is that not the case? So we got a site down there where the, where the, all the works is right now, the future. I'm moving, was that not considered? Or was it just the three sites you looked at?
Just the three.
Just these three sites, right?
Well, I can tell you my preference today. It would be 3A, and then if I had a second choice, it would be 2B. 3A is the library site, and 2B is the City Hall site.
Can you change the slides? So, Charlie?
So 2B is the City Hall without the library. And 3A is the library. The library site. So you've given us two of your preferences. One is City Hall, the other one is library.
Why, why, why does the library have to be part of this? Is there something wrong with our library that needs to be like?
It's expanded.
It was an option. So there's really three options. One of them says with library or without library, with library or without library, with library or without library. And so that created more options. But one thought was, go ahead and expand the library. You've got to plan to do that. The other option was, what if you put the library inside the Performing Arts Center? Would that create some vibrancy and would that be wanted and needed? And there's two schools of thought. One is leave the library where it is, expand the library where it is, and build the Performing Arts Center somewhere else. Other school of thought is, when you build the Performing Arts Center, put the library in.
I wonder what the nexus is. Like, when I think Performing Arts Center, I don't think library. So how do you marry those two? Like, is there a rational marriage there, or is it a?
Lob, grenade.
I think one of the thoughts were to, and I think these folks could talk a little bit more than I can, the traditional Performing Arts Center, there is no nexus, they're not put together. But there have been some movements to add things in something like this to create activity all the time. So you might put a college portion, you might put a library portion, and then you have this Performing Arts Center, which is empty Monday through Friday. And then on a weekend, maybe once a month, it's alive and vibrant. So what does the Performing Arts Center look like in downtown if it is empty five days a week, three weeks of a month? A counter to that is, put a library in there, put a coffee shop in there, put a retail in there, put your dance recitals in there, put theater in there, put a college in there, and it will be vibrant.
We're going to need a bigger boat.
We're going to, yeah. You're going to, well, I mean, that's one of the things to keep it vibrant. So you can have a Performing Arts Center with lots of things going on during the, whenever there's no performance. Or you could just say, no, this is the Performing Arts Center. It's active during performances. I, I don't know if you have anything else to add. Does that capture it? You guys are in that business more than, that was my takeaway. You have two options.
Hey, I mean, here are my initial thoughts, then. I kind of like your argument that the library would create activity. We need to expand it anyway. Hopefully, this would save money to make it part of this and not have to redo the existing library. My next thought would be, the Taveri Square, that open space is so awesome. Like, it does make sense to build some huge, I'm going to use the word monstrosity. And I, I know it's not going to be that. But it makes sense to me to leave that open and viewful for outside stuff. So I like the City Hall venue. I'm a little less so much about where a library is because, you know, if you want folks to leave the Performing Arts Center and like walk to the queues or walk to, you know, restaurants and stuff, I don't see them doing that where the library is right now. I would see them doing it from City Hall versus the metro. I mean, I'm bad, man. I cross the streets and they're ill to me. So I like City Hall absolutely. I'd never agree to mess up a square with a building on it. At, at least not right now. The library is like the second choice. City Hall's my number one choice. I, the library sounds like, you know, keep people tracking through there. So whatever option R2D2 that is. Will they own it to the City Hall?
I've got, I've got, we're good, we're good.
Oh, where do I start? And here, here's part of this. And I understand this, I do, I understand the purpose of this. But these people had a very limited amount of time to fully understand the scope of what we're doing. They don't understand about positioning a building. They're just thinking, we have this green grassy lot, let's just build on it. I, I know this, I know if, if I could sit with every person, I bet I could convince them otherwise because I truly feel like the City Hall site is the best. And y'all know I'm the liaison to the project and I have been working on this for so, so long. But the day that I was shown the City Hall site, which has been, I'm going to say, what, a year and a half ago? At least over a year, year and a half ago. I tell you what, I mean, I got chills once. I was like, this is absolutely perfect. And the reason why it was perfect, I mean, I could sit here for like six hours with y'all. I know it's getting late. But just listen to this. So the parking garage is so important. Do y'all know how much rain we have? I own an outdoor venue and I get rained out so much. People don't, I mean, you need to have the parking. A lot of these shows, people will come and they'll be dressed, and they'll be dressed nice. They need to be in a parking garage where they can park in the parking garage and they can take the little escalator or little people mover that takes them across, across Rockingham here. And they're looking out over the green space and seeing the beautiful lake. I mean, this, the lake is all we have in Taveris. We're a lakefront city. People need to see that. If you, if you build a performing arts center, you block people going up and down the street. But think about them riding in that whole glass across Rockingham and looking out over the lake. They'll be able to see the lake, they'll be able to see Christmas lights or whatever we have going on. So that's real important. But it was just the space. It's also being able to attach the parking garage. The parking garage is going to be out here. And no car will have to drive down Main Street. Y'all talking about pedestrians and pedestrian traffic in our entertainment district? There is no better place for this parking garage than back here on this back corner on property that we own, people can access. They can go back to Mount Door, they can head to Claremont, they can head anywhere, straight access, in and out of town. Don't even have to get on Main Street. And that, that causes a lot of problems. People parking on Main Street and, and trying to drive down Main Street from the parking garage that we have now. So it's just real important, that parking garage that's perfectly situated. So let's talk another thing about the library. The, the point of the library, I know you're tired. The point of the library is because we want to leave all of our options open. If you have the opportunity to leave options open, you do. There's hopes of maybe one day attracting a college. We've been talking to some colleges. If you have, if a college decides to come in and put a satellite campus here for their theater or drama department, they're going to have to have a library. They need a library. That is such a selling point to, and that would be great. And just like John was saying, the performing arts portion of this building will not be being used all the time. It's still like a big old elephant sitting here in the middle of town. But if there is activity, just bustling activity between classrooms and, and different drama classes and the library. Now also think about people who come to the library. They'll be able to park in the parking garage, whether it's raining or not. They can get in their car from their garage, drive here. And while they're at the library, there'll be posters, there'll be all kinds of things about shows that are coming up. They can just walk right out the library door, walk over and get their tickets to shows. I mean, it makes so much sense to me to have this all put together. And when you think about the library site that we have now, I, I have hopes of having a senior center on steroids. We have such a large congregation of seniors in our city and we truly don't offer them enough. I would love to take the library site that we have now, either move the civic center into the library and turn the old civic center into a senior center, or vice versa, whichever way would work the best. But that's, and now look what all we've done, look what all we've accomplished by putting this in one place altogether. It keeps traffic, it looks like activity at all times. I just think it's a wonderful time. And I tell you what, people will come to the library and they'll come and they'll eat in our restaurants and they'll walk down our streets. And they'll be safely parked in the parking garage that will be nicely lit, all safe. And that's just a little bit of it. And I'm not even talking about the negatives of Taveri Square because Ms. LaRotta is completely right. Visioning session said that the, the public did not want that, they wanted that space to remain open because that is such an asset. We have such an asset, and I hear people say that all the time. So with that, I'll close. And before any vote is done, I mean, I'm only going to vote one way because that's the only way I can vote because I've been working on this so long and I've learned just so much. I, I couldn't even tell y'all all this in six hours that I have learned since we first found this site. And like I said, I've got chills once right now because it's perfect. And you may not think it is right now, but I'm telling you, if you fully understand the whole scope of what we're trying to do, the City Hall site is the one and only site for the performing arts. Thank you.
That's passion.
It is passion. It's worth not to talk about.
Well, obviously, I, I, the library site, I don't think that would be feasible. The one thing I really don't understand is not including the library. I think by including the library, don't we also have to, maybe some additional grant money or something if the library is included in that?
I, I think there are dollars that would come to the library. There's impacting money from the county and things like that. So the answer is. So the answer is yes. There'll be dollars associated with the library collection.
So I'm having a favor of including the library in this. I like the city hall aspect. I think that would probably be the best fit. I know that we're talking about Taveri Square. And I know that on the master plan update now, Mike may be correct me if I'm wrong on the date. Did the citizens say that they wanted that completely empty? Or did they say they wanted like a mixed use on that?
The approved downtown master plan has a mixed use function with some open space. But there is an indication of development on that property in the master plan.
But yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of building the entire project on the Taveri Square. I want to go to record this thing. I'm in favor of the city hall project, including the library. Is this something that we need to vote on right now or?
Oh, you got to finish. So far, you've got Roy, city hall, the library. Amanda, city hall, and also the library. And you've got Lori, city hall, the library. And you've got Troy with city hall, the library. And so we have one more boardroom. And you're in none of the sites, no. All right, so you've got three with city, hall, library, one in.
So can we maybe make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we progress with the performing arts on the city hall site, including the library and the parking garage.
I'll say it.
We have a motion in the second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. The motion carries that we will have to move forward with looking at the city hall with the inclusion of library.
And for the record, that was 21.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we are going to move on to new business. New business. New business and the old business. No old business. Well, some of you might have noticed on the agenda, I've added, expanded the agenda a little bit by putting a standing title, which is called Historical Perspective. And this comes from the Taveri's vision statement practiced by the citizens and adopted by a city council over 10 years ago. It starts off by saying, "Taveri is the capital waterfront city of Lake County, building on historic foundation." And most of you know who attend these meetings quite often. Usually before we do, audience to be heard. Ms. Burley will come up and usually give us a historical quote or some information. So I kind of added that to accommodate that. I would hope that Ms. Burley would be able to do that thing. Unfortunately, Ms. Burley is up in the weather and she's unable to do that. So I contacted the president of the Historical Society, Brendan Smith, who was only able to stay until 6 o'clock. And unfortunately, our meeting has run a little bit longer than normal. So my apologies for that. But I do have something I would like to take just a moment to add since we do have this portion of the agenda open. And it says, "In 1937, Police Chief Messer comprised the entire police force of one and drove to town in Taveri's on a red and green colored bicycle at night. He rigged a yellow light on the tallest telephone pole by his home so that when a call came in, his wife, Zula, could let him know by switching the light on, which he could see while he was on patrol. And while we're on the topic of law enforcement, the Langford Road State Prison in Taveri's operated from 1930 to 1960. The prison was the backdrop of the 1967 movie Cool Hand Luke, starring Paul Newman and George Kippe. Remnants of the prison still stand today and the state of Florida still owns the property." So hopefully at our next meeting, the Historical Perspective report will include Ms. Burley. And I'm going to go ahead and close that and move on to reports. Oh, my apologies. Yes, we have audience to be heard. Thank you. We have one request to speak and that is by Edward Mountain.
Holman.
Holman. Yes, sir.
Thank you all for letting me come here and speak tonight. This is the last of 10 city councils that I've been to and spoken on the same art, same problem. But it is, I wrote what will become federal law and I won't quit until it is the stubbornest old man the state of Florida has ever seen. It's called Claire's Law. And the purpose of this law is to get rid of sexual predators working in hospitals, nursing homes, and medical facilities all over the country. Now, I have been trying to do this here in Florida for almost 13 years. April 1st will be 13 years ago that my wife was sexually assaulted by a male nurse at Health Central Hospital of Ocoee. And she lived two and a half years with post-traumatic stress. She had panic attacks every day, nightmares, work by time, every single night. Now, this nurse attacked her at that hospital. The man worked at six different hospitals in eight years before he ever got caught up with by the law. And when they caught up with him, he had 19 charges against him. Now, he got put in jail and he went to court and he got probation. They let Orange County let him make a plea deal. He got 15 years of probation. For four years, he violated his probation. I came back from New York down here to see that he went to court with him. I got him put in prison. He was supposed to be in prison 15 years. Within four months of Orange County just blew that whole thing up so badly they had to let him out of prison. I found out, then he went back to probation. Then in April of this, I found out that he'd been arrested by ICE because he was illegal. How in the world did it take him 18 years? He was in jail, on probation, in prison, and every other thing. Took him 18 years. He was a nurse for eight years and worked at six different hospitals. No one knew he was illegal for 18 years. Somebody's not doing the job they're being due. Somebody's going to answer me sooner or later. But this thing, we got to do something. We put our little kids in there, in these hospitals and places that are too small to even know the difference between good touches and bad. Who stands for those? Who speaks for those people? We put our elderly people in who are, some of them have dementia, some of them are, you know, they're just, they don't know what's going on. Who speaks for them? And then we put our, all of our loved ones in these places and nine out of 10 of them don't even make a complaint because they're either too scared or too embarrassed to do that. Who speaks for them? Somebody has to speak for them. I guess that somebody's me. I've been doing it for almost 13 years.
Did you have a request or did you just want to make a statement? Did you have a request from us or did you just want to?
Well, I have been to, like I said, this is the 10th city that I've been to. I got a proclamation right in here from the city of Ocoee. I have another one coming from the city of Apopka. I have another one coming from Yumajola. I was there last night. And I'd appreciate it if you thought you could make up a proclamation to give to me. I'm going to take them all to Tallahassee and I'm going to promote for all these politicians to see maybe I can get their attention. I don't know. I am going to walk from the Mount Door Police Department to Tallahassee. It's a 237 mile walk. I'm a 75-year-old man and I will darn sure do it. They don't know what to do with me because they can't make me quit. I don't care. My wife did not deserve to live two and a half years with post-traumatic stress as she did. Before she died in 2008 at age 62, she didn't deserve that. No one else does either. I'm here by the grace of God to see that they don't pay.
Well, thank you very much. We'll look at, I appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're very welcome. Anybody else would like to speak? All right, we're going to move on to reports.
All right, next meeting, Ms. Chaney, where are you? 16. And we already have a photographer here to take a photograph of the council. We do it once a year, the staff and the council. So where would you think is appropriate at the next council meeting for a photograph of the team and council? Because we got love that all over social media, internet, this and that. So that's all I have. Thanks. Oh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
With hats.
Thank you, Mayor. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to all of you and be safe and a great new year.
Thank you. Sure, Christmas, Happy New Year.
I thank you, Mayor, for joining us on our educational nursery tour. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Chief?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and more. I want to thank all of you and I'm going to tell you one. Long night. You were so animated and excited about this item number 20. And I appreciate that. When you're sitting out here, it's so rewarding to get that enthusiasm coming your way. So thank you to all of you. Roy, you've got New Year in it, and I love that. So thanks. My early Christmas, it didn't end up like I expected, but it's great and jazz. Hey, Ruby Street party coming up. So we are having event t-shirts made like we always do for the staff. If you are interested, I need your trip sizes. Yep, thank you. And send you out your New Year. Thank you. Merry Christmas to all of you and wish you a safe holiday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations to Gary Corner on his appointment to planning his own ward. I will reach out to Gary to give him an orientation on the process. Merry Christmas, stuffy.
I don't have much. Just a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. And a legend of on this day in 1972, Apollo 17 landed. And today is National Oatmeal Muffin Day.
Only thing I have to report is that I will be in trial that weekend in January. So I will do my best to be on time. And everybody have a good one.
Well, I'm not saying Merry Christmas. I don't know how Merry Christmas needs to be.
Yeah, Merry Christmas. I get filled a whole lot for my Christmas, so I did so.
I just want to thank the Taveri High School banding for coming today. It was great. I hope everybody enjoyed that or liked great things for people that came and to hear them. Moving the square is Friday at 6:00 p.m. We're going to have popcorn and hot chocolate out there. Come out and watch the stand-up class. Just want to thank the staff for all the work we did and all their hard work and this council. And I just wish that everybody has a Merry, Merry Christmas, a blessed new year. And with no further things on the agenda, I'm going to call this meeting to an end.